The writing is provided by Sonoma Paint Center located at 815 West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonomapaintcenter.com.
Back there in the emergency operation center, so I think we're ready to start. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and do the call to order and pledge of allegiance. And I would like Dr. Kimberly Ubenet to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for not yet the last time, I would like to say to Gaye, the roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Mayor Gallion?
Present. So with this, we are going to open up the, oh, I do believe we have an announcement.
Yes, Mayor Gallion, on your agenda tonight as item 6A is discussion of possible action on the Climate Action Plan and the city's element of that plan. The city is also being asked as part of that approval to make findings regarding an EIR that was prepared by the RCPA. And that EIR is being utilized by the various member agencies of the RCPA to approve in the future their portions of the Climate Action Plan. Last week, the RCPA was sued, and the suit was brought to challenge that EIR. So we do not know the outcome of that suit, and if it were to be favorable to the plaintiffs and the city council were to move forward tonight and approve the plan based upon that EIR, it would place the council's approval in jeopardy. So it is staff's recommendation and the city attorney's office recommendation that that item be pulled and tabled indefinitely until that lawsuit has been resolved or clarified.
Okay, and is this something that we would ask for a motion of the council members to do at this time?
Yes, I think before you take that action, you could open up to the public to make comments on this very issue and only this issue. Should the item be pulled or should the council go forward and take action notwithstanding the pending litigation?
Thank you very much. So at this time, after I go ahead and request the comments from the public, it would be on this item only that they would be commenting? Correct?
Yes, on the pulling of the item, not the substance of the item, but on whether or not it should be tabled because of the pending litigation.
Okay, so let's go ahead and ask for anyone who wishes to speak on that specific pulling of this item to step forward.
Hi, my name is Tom Conlin. I'm here tonight representing transition Sonoma Valley. We are networking for resilience here in the valley, and I'm also an energy efficiency consultant with about 20 years of experience in data analysis and reports such as the Climate Action Report that we're talking about here. I rose on surprise news here that we would be pulling the matter, proposed to pull the matter from the agenda tonight. I am not a party to the suit. I am not aware of the suit really in any great detail, but I do think it's beneficial to the city to take a pause and give the county and parties perhaps who have concerns about the Climate Action Plan to consider the issues. And I have shared with you tonight some of my own thoughts on this and some of our organization's thoughts on this. They are not directly, in my opinion, they're not directly associated with the EIR and the suit, but because the environmental impact report is grounded in this baseline analysis, which I find, I have questions with, we have questions with, I think it would behoove the council to push the agenda tonight. So that's my comment tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Jerry Bernhat. I'm one of the attorneys who filed the complaint that the gentleman just referred to. So I actually second Tom's comment. I prepare some written comments which I can submit. I'm not clear if you decide to table the discussion of the EIR, whether that means there'll be no discussion of a substantive nature about the Climate Action Plan. If there is, I'd like to stay and comment on that. If not, then, you know, I would withdraw totally in terms of any further comment. But I do second Tom's encouraging the city council to, for one thing, read our petition, see what our concerns are. I've expressed my concerns here before. I think, I know Lori's familiar with them. Hopefully, the other members are familiar. So I think that's as much as I need to say right now, but I would like some clarification as to after you make your decision on the procedural matter, whether there's going to be any further substantive discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Fred Alabag at 195508 Street East, and I'd like to know if this suit stops all action on Climate Action 2020 until the suit's resolved, like for example, all the local measures that we had talked about, is that all just on hold now? I don't know if Jeff can answer that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Cornell from Sonoma Ecology Center, and we don't know all the details about the suit or, you know, the pulling versus the discussion, but we just wanted to come and say, for the last five years, we've been researching and discussing with many agencies and the public in detail the hazards of climate change as they affect Sonoma Valley and Sonoma County. And I could go on at great length about the statistics and the science, but just to sum up, it's terrifying. It's a matter of extreme urgency, and if the lawsuit rolls forward without the city and other cities signing on, it means there's an indefinite delay in taking the kind of action that we have to take. We need to take action now that we will not be embarrassed about and ashamed about in 20 years. And every month, or six months, or year of delay is a harm against our future. So I would urge you not to pull it and to have the discussion, and if you can, to put your stamp on this plan, which does have flaws, every plan does, but it's so much better than not having a plan at all. And we need to make progress. We might not be able to know exactly how we can measure our progress yet. Those are some of the issues that the lawsuit has raised, but we need to start making progress. And you can do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment on this, on the pulling of the item tonight? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and bring it back to council. City attorney, if I might ask you, there was a question or two in there. Would you like to respond to those questions?
Certainly. My recommendation is the entirety of the action be pulled from the agenda tonight. There'd be no discussion of the plan itself and whether there would, I'm not suggesting you only not discuss the EIR, but go ahead and discuss the plan. That does not make sense, because if you're not going to take action with respect to the EIR, it's basically a futile exercise to talk about the plan without then taking action on the plan. Number two, whether or not the individual components in the plan are going to be implemented without the plan being approved is the subject of further study and review. So we don't know that whether or not pending the outcome of the litigation, the city should go forward and adopt some of the, or take some of the actions that are set forth in the plan. And we'll come back to the council with further information about that. But right now, the proposal is we just put this on hold, on the back burner, waiting to see what's going to happen with the case.
Council questions of staff. Councilmember Cook?
I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we pull the public hearing, item 6A.
I'll second that.
Do we have any further discussion? I just would like to make a comment that I feel that Jeff, many times you have advised me in many decisions, and you've advised the council, and you use the term abundance of caution. I think this is one of those times where I see the value of that statement. And by no means do I feel at this point that this is any weakening of my position and the work that has been done on the project itself. I just feel that there is not enough information available to us at this point in order to be making the decisions that are here before us tonight. So in that respect, I'd like to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So it is unanimous that this item has been tabled by the action here tonight. So there, I just want to confirm that there will be no further discussion tonight on this agenda item or public hearing that was planned on the Climate Action Plan. All right, comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under the item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name and address. Please start.
Michelle Ritchie, R.I.C.H.E.Y., 215 East Watmo. Good evening, council members. I come before you again to talk about the lack of, what I would like to say, affordable housing, what I really mean is low-income rentals. The rents in Sonoma have been risen, keep rising so high, that the local workforce are being forced out of Sonoma. That means many of us are going to have to commute to be able to come to our jobs. That means a large increase of cars and trucks on the road, which also means that this town is making and will continue to make a huge carbon footprint. The lack of low-income rentals will create more congestion of our roadways, more gas consumption, and more air pollution. If we had more affordable rentals, then most of our workforce could work and still live in Sonoma. If we had more affordable rentals, you would not see an increasing homelessness in this town. Inaction, indifference, or refusing to acknowledge its problem will not make the problem go away. Inaction or denial of this problem will mean we will create more homelessness, more people sleeping in their cars, and more congestion of roadways with declining air quality. And yes, we have homelessness, residents of Sonoma, not transients, not out-of-towners. Sonoma residents are homeless. I've lived and worked in Sonoma for over 30 years. My landlord of eight years wanted to raise the rent to something I couldn't afford, and there was nothing else available or affordable. So I was homeless for almost 14 months, but I was lucky. I had friends that let me live with them until I could find something. The only reason I did find somewhere to live is because a friend of mine died, and I ended up moving into his house. And the reason I keep coming up here and telling you about this is because the city of Sonoma is facing a housing crisis. It might not seem like a crisis to people who own their own homes, but it's a crisis to those of us who don't. And as a side note, being an officer of the local dog park right across the way, I wanted to clarify our position regarding the Sonoma overnight shelter. We don't care if the haven has five parking lots, parking spots for their overflow. It's the perfect spot. They'll be monitored with bathroom facilities and food nearby.
I need you to summarize.
I will. Our letter stated that we would prefer that you not assign the five spots in front of the dog park. Any other parking spots would be fine.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make sure you understood that letter completely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Ransom. I live in Santa Rosa. I go to church in Sonoma. It was really great to see that you all are getting to work on this housing stuff. I learned about it from folks in Santa Rosa who said, hey, Dave, what's going on? So it was great to hear. It was also good to hear today people describing it as a housing emergency, because I think that is the reality of the situation. Coming over here from Sonoma, I got caught in rush hour traffic. As I go back and forth from the city, I am very often in rush hour traffic, people going and coming from. Those are folks who work here. As the previous spokesperson said, the emissions from that are unnecessary. I have recently lost two good friends who moved away, not from Sonoma but from Santa Rosa, because they couldn't afford the housing. One of them was a longtime county worker who had retired. Another is an entrepreneur who couldn't afford to find a place and had to leave. So it's not just Sonoma, it's Santa Rosa as well, and I have friends in Vallejo, and they say that's happening there too. The Bay Area Council recently did a study and found that 30% of people in the Bay Area were planning to leave. One of the planning directors in Palo Alto just resigned and said, I can't afford to live here, I'm going somewhere else. The Wall Street Journal did a story about 10 days ago saying that land costs are pushing developers out to the far suburbs, and by that, they meant Manteca, Mantica. And I did a little research and discovered that you, it's a possible commute, there are freeways that'll bring you to the Bay Area, but it's about an hour and a half if the traffic is good. And that's what we're talking about if we don't adopt a, not only the stuff that you're starting with now, and that's doable, but a comprehensive plan that takes into account the rest of the county. Spiritual action at United Methodist Church would still like to present the program we brought, having heard from about 300 people in the community a year ago. We'd still like to present that, because it is a comprehensive outlook, and I think it would be a good starting point for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tim Boevee, and that last name is spelled B-O-E-V-E, 638 Zenia Court. Today, I read an article by Bill McKibben, it's in The New Republic, and he's talking about the Third World War. And in this case, he's talking about the world war that we have with global warming. And I, as I read that article, and I'm not going to summarize a lot of it, but basically he said that what we did as a country when we faced that Second World War was we mobilized, right? He talked about a plant that got started in Michigan near Detroit. And in one year, this country built more tanks than Germany did throughout that whole period. So basically, what he's saying is that we have the ability as a nation to mount the necessary resources to address this huge problem. And wildfires in California that we're reading about, the flooding in Louisiana, we're seeing more and more of this weird climate weather. I think all of us are realizing how serious the problem is, but what's not happening in my judgment is that we're not mobilizing our resources. Sonoma, California is known for many, many things internationally, you know, as a tourist destination, a great place for food and wine, a party town. I think I even read recently we're one of those lists. What I would love to see is that we become a community that is on the forefront of doing everything we possibly can to address climate change. Now, I know the city council can't do that alone. We need businesses, we need local residents to step up, but I do think that what you do as a council can have enormous impact in this city on this, I think perhaps the most critical issue facing humanity today, and facing us too, though as we don't feel the impacts as much as communities on the coast are feeling right now. I think it's incumbent upon us as thoughtful citizens of this country and in this community to really be on the forefront and not to wait, but to move forward with all earnestness. And I urge the city council to do everything in your power to lead this community, to be one of the leading top 10 communities in the nation that confronts climate change with sensible, business-friendly, community-friendly. I think we can do it. We have the intellectual capital, and all we need is the will to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jack Wagner, 270 West Napa Street. I'm now official candidate for city council this year, and now that all of the ballot requirements are met, I'd like to welcome Dave and Lori to the race. I've, from what I've heard around town, you guys have a pretty good shot at getting reelected. No, I'm running to make housing a priority. I'm glad I heard that from our mayor during the meeting. This is what I've been talking about with everyone. I'm really humbled by the support I've gotten so far. Part of that, I am, you know, open to a TOT increase being on the ballot, but if we can do it sooner than that and not have to even put it on the ballot, I would support that. I think there's a lot of issues involved in housing that we have to take care of, and I think we need to really focus what our extra agenda items are being used for over the next year, year or two, and I hope to contribute to that and contribute to an open and fun debate here at the city council and during the campaign. And yeah, I think I've shown that I can touch on topics from, you know, climate change to dog parks, and so I feel very confident that I can simply just focus on housing this year and that we can focus on that, and that when other things come up, that we're going to be capable of dealing with those as they come. So I look forward to the next few months, and thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Thank you, Dave, for showing up.
Good evening. Dave DuPlante, California State Parks, Sonoma Sector. The purpose, why I'm here tonight is Mayor Gallion asked me to come and talk to you about an event we're planning this Saturday, August 20th, here in Sonoma, down at the Casa Grande area. National Park Service is celebrating their centennial this year, and so 100 years the National Park Service has been in operation, and we have invited them down to help celebrate that, because we're good partners with them. And so they were kind enough to come down this Saturday and have an exhibit set up to honor our national parks. So we would just like to let everyone know we will be hosting that down in the plaza free of charge. We should have a nice exhibit set up for everyone to enjoy. And also, just to celebrate that, we have two national historic landmarks right close to us. Of course, the Bear Flag Revolt Monument is a national historic landmark, as well as the Petaluma Adobe State Park is also considered a national landmark. Again, that's Saturday, August 20th, from 10:30 to 2:30 PM down at Casa Grande area, 20 East, Spain. One other thing I wanted to touch on briefly is our community outreach activities that we've been active with here in the Sonoma sector. As you can see on the slide set above you, we've been thinking about and trying to become more of an interactive participant, if you will, in Sonoma and the community. It's a great community, and one of the things we have definitely tried to improve upon is our interest and attention to these things. So we have been delivering some nice programs over the last couple of years. Our Campfire Program, which we host on a monthly basis down at the barracks, has been a big hit with people, local visitors and kids. And by the way, all these programs were really designed to help our young children and young adults enjoy our parks more, so I just wanted to state that. We also introduced what we call pop-up programs, which are just programs we set up down in the plaza, and we talk about different topics, nature, we talk about our parks, you know, different things involved with our visitors that people find interesting. We are now participating in the Farmer's Market City Parks Night, where we go and set up a table and entertain everyone with animal pelts and different things about nature there. And we have a nice turnout for the kids that look forward to seeing us. We also have a Marshlands program. During the winter, we have, 70% of our lands by the Vallejo home is actually considered wetlands, and so we launched a program where kids can come out and explore the wetlands. We set up a little lab, they come out and poke around, find out what lives during the wet period. The Nature Hike, we introduced a nature hike on the Montini Trail, so we've partnered with the city and the Ecology Center, et cetera, and we actually lead a nature hike on a monthly basis up on the Montini Trail. It's a nice loop we use. I've actually created a narrative for it for kids and for adults, so they can enjoy that. Do I have one more minute to finish?
Yes, and please include who is going to be the special guest from the parks.
Oh, the special guest, I will, okay. I'll do that right now. It's John Del Oso, if I pronounced that right, right. National Park Specialist, interpreter, who will be coming from the Point Reyes area for this, yeah. Oh, Optics and Nature Festival, so last year, we hosted the Optics and Nature Festival right down here in the plaza. We are doing that this year. So we're working with Sonoma Birding on that, with Tom Russert and his group, and we're proud to say we'll be hosting that and partnering with him. We had a great turnout last year, over 70 exhibitors and over 1,500 people attending. Hopefully, this year, the weather will cooperate a little. It was like 105 degrees last year, so hopefully, it'll be a little cooler this year. Last thing, we do a Scouts So hopefully, it'll be a little cooler this year. Last thing, we do a Scouts Den and Pack Meeting. So we've hosted some Scout and Den Pack Meetings down at the barracks in our area for local PAC-16 a couple times a year. And another program we launched this year in Sonoma Valley was getting out to our schools. So we have a Mobile Junior Ranger Program, where we actually go to the schools, free of charge, and we put on an hour-long program for them. So last year, I did 17 Mobile Junior Ranger Programs. We're over 500 kids in the Sonoma Valley area. Okay. And again, we've continued that this year, and we've made some great progress with that. Okay. I think at this point, I'll end up, but I just, we just wanted to give you an idea of some of the, I think, additions we've made to our area here and how state parks plays a vital role in it. Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
I just wanted to make one more brief comment. However our lawsuit turns out, there is nothing stopping the city from going forward with greenhouse gas-reducing measures. Green building codes, infill development, solar installations, they're all good programs. What rear-raising is the issue of whether that's enough, given the local land use planning and, you know, planning for additional growth and whatnot. And those issues will be worked out in the course of the litigation, but there's no reason for this city not to proceed with the good measures that it's already considering. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. Talk about a nickel holding up a dollar, huh? Anyway, I'm sure you all have noticed the kids are either back in school or going back to school this week. And one thing that I always notice is how many cars just sit there and idle and idle and idle, waiting for their kids to come out of class. We're fortunate enough, or we've worked hard enough, to live close enough that our kids can walk or ride their bikes to school. But one thing I'd really think that this city can do that would, number one, improve the quality of life for so many people, but also have impacts on such things like climate change, is just making it easier and safer, or the perception of safer, for our kids to ride or walk their bikes to school. This would get hundreds, if not thousands, of cars off our streets, or save thousands of trips every day, just in our own little community. So anything that you can do to help curve that a little, discourage that a little, or just encourage our kids to do, at least what I used to do when I was a kid, was walk or ride my bike to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming up for public comment, I will go ahead and close that section. Do we have any meeting dedications? Seeing none from the council members, we'll move on to presentations. And I have School Attendance Awareness Month proclamation, and I have a representative here to go and present this to.
I just want to make sure you're Mr. Tuie from the...
I'm Paul Tuie, the Coordinator of Student Services. Do I raise my...
I don't know. It was a great first day for you, I hope. All right. So the City of Sonoma is issuing this proclamation as Attendance Awareness Month. Whereas chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused or unexcused absences, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and higher dropout rates. And whereas regular attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as kindergarteners. And whereas regular attendance contributes to improve third-grade reading proficiency, greater high school success, and fewer dropouts, thus strengthening our communities and our local economy. And whereas excessive absences exacerbate the achievement gap of students of poverty, since those students are more likely to miss school and to lack the resources to make up for lost academic time. And whereas all students are affected by chronic absenteeism, when teachers must spend additional time reviewing those who missed instruction. And whereas schools and districts must accurately track, calculate, and share attendance data, so that the interventions are provided to students in a timely fashion. And whereas efforts to improve struggling schools are strengthened by high rates of regular attendance. And whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absences takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to the particular challenges and strengths in each community. And whereas improving attendance and reducing... excuse me. Whereas school attendance can be significantly improved when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address the obstacles that keep children from getting to school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lori Gallion, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, do hereby proclaim our city will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. We hereby commit to support improving school attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you can say a few words. As someone who did this in the office of a public school, I can tell you that I have heard probably very many unusual excuses. I'm sure you could even top me.
Thank you, Mayor. As representative of the school, and in a nutshell, we are looking at September, joining a national campaign as Attendance Awareness Month for students. And as we are aware, it takes much more than the four walls of the schoolhouse to train a child in education. It takes all certificated and classified people of our district. It takes parents and family members. And now with the proclamation, we will include our community as the third piece. And I think the full piece of the puzzle is joining us. So we thank you for your involvement in the proclamation. We thank you for your support. And I just want to pass on that the community is a huge part of educating our youth here in the valley. And our theme this year is "It Takes a Valley," and that's our school district's theme for Sonoma Valley Unified School District. So I accept this and appreciate it, and we will move on in our important jobs. Thank you. Did you have any questions? I'm sorry. I always have to do that for the school board. Thank you.
Isn't that part of your job requirement? All right. So at this point, I'd like to have the proclamation and the representative body for Freedom Week Sonoma come forward.
You guys want to come up?
Come on, guys.
We're all coming up together.
Johnny, get over here. Visitors Bureau, Fire Department, Bill and Mark. We have a spokesperson, however.
Yes.
Freedom Week Sonoma. Whereas Freedom Day USA is a national thank you movement for veterans and members of our military and their immediate families, founded by Robert Martino, Doctor of Dental Surgery, owner of Wilson Martino Dental, West Virginia's largest dental clinic, and built upon by the members of the Platinum Circle, a group of elite dentists who practice throughout our country. And whereas Dr. Martino's vision was to give members of our military a Freedom Day, a day where we thank them for giving us our freedom by providing free services, goods, products, and other items as a thank you for the sacrifice, service, and freedom these men and women have provided to us. And whereas the initial Sonoma Freedom Day event was held on September 12, 2013, with the initial guidance, help, and support of Dr. Kimberly Ubinat, owner of Synergy Dental Group and a member of the Platinum Circle, she expanded the initial concept beyond her dental practice to other businesses within the Sonoma Valley and established it as a very worthy local community annual event that takes place annually during the second week of September. We have the second annual Freedom Day that was very successful because in 2014, the Rotary Club of Sonoma Valley stepped up to support Dr. Kimberly Ubinat in her efforts. And all those that participated in the first year doubled the number of participating businesses in the second year. And during the third annual event, the Rotary Club of Sonoma Valley expanded the single-day concept to take place over several days, and thus renamed it within our local community as Freedom Week Sonoma. Approximately 80 local businesses, and I think that bears repeating, 80 local businesses participated with this expanded attitude and renamed the event last year. And additional cosponsors now include Amvets, Hap Arnold Post 55, the American Legion Jaclyn in Post 489, the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, and the Sonoma Valley Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the initial scope of the event has been expanded locally to now thank our local first responders, our law enforcement officers and firefighters, along with our military veterans and the active-duty members of our armed forces and their immediate families, it is a genuine thank you for the dedication, sacrifice, and commitment of our active-duty members of our United States Armed Forces, their immediate families, veterans of our armed forces, local first responders, law enforcement officers, and firefighters. There are no strings attached on this day, and no requirement to purchase anything as participating businesses. Now, therefore, I, Lori Gallion, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, do hereby proclaim September 8 through 11, 2016, Freedom Week Sonoma. Thank you. And I'm sure you, you as spokesperson, have even more to enlighten us about.
Thank you, Mayor Gallion, and the city council members. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for honoring us with this proclamation for our annual events, Freedom Week Sonoma, and thanking all the first responders, military, and veterans for their services, for if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be doing this. And also, I'm honored and appreciative to accept the proclamation on behalf of my fellow colleagues throughout the US, for if it weren't for their vision three years ago, this event would not have taken place. I thank all my friends and committee volunteers, especially Bob Leonard, Bill O'Neill, Vicki Whiting, Terri Lee, Steve Pearl, for their efforts, and everybody in the committee, the first responders, the veterans, and the military that have come and helped and asked for participation. With this event, it's going to triple in size from 30 to now over 80 participants in Freedom Week Sonoma. And especially, we wanted to thank our 2016 Rotary President JP for following and making sure that this event goes through, for allowing all of our Sonoma to be supportive of this annual project. And lastly, our cosponsors for this project, Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Sonoma Visitors Bureau, Amvets, American Legion, especially our military firefighters and first responders and veterans. Collectively, you all make a difference in supporting our community. Thank you.
So if you have, if you are one of this classification that is going to be celebrated during that date, where would you find additional information?
So the Sonoma Visitors Bureau is the main headquarters for September the 8th through the 11th. So you're going to pick up a map, and then there'll be, all the participants will be on the list. They're going to be all listed on that map. And the website's freedomweeksonoma.org.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think our next item is Item 3C, which is the update by Sonoma Clean Power on program status and future activities.
Thank you, Mayor Gallion, and members of the council for inviting me here for an update on Sonoma Clean Power. Let me see if that's queued up. So a lot has happened since your city voted to join Sonoma Clean Power. And for those who aren't as familiar, we're an agency that provides cleaner electricity to members, to anyone in Sonoma County wishing to have that service. And it's part of a larger movement in California. So we were the second program to get going, but there are now five operating programs around California, another one scheduled for 2017. And they're increasingly common, and we're seeing even LA County is forming a program. So things are taking off fairly quickly. PG&E actually is estimating, so we rent PG&E's wires to deliver our energy to customers, and they still maintain those wires. So they're, in effect, a partner that facilitates competition. And they estimate that up to half of all of their customers will be on Community Choice by 2030. So it's a fast-changing world. And so I wanted to talk about what's happened in the last two years. So Sonoma's been in the program for the last two years, and each of your residents and businesses have had this option. And so what's exciting, of course, is that all the cities that wanted to be a part of this are in, and that's everyone except Healdsburg. They have their own municipal utility, so they don't really need this kind of a program. And we're currently trending, around 88% of customers have chosen to stay in Sonoma Clean Power rather than to opt out and receive service from PG&E. And so we're really proud of that. That's actually means we're doing really well. It's hard to get 88% of anything. And so we do still expect maybe one or two more percent to opt out over time, given that we are the default provider. But that's better than we had originally forecast. We've also made some good progress. So in the first year, in 2014, our estimated reduction in greenhouse gas emissions that should be validated fairly soon, the next couple of months, is that we reduced emissions by 48% relative to PG&E's mix. And here's where PG&E gets a shout-out. They're actually one of the cleanest utilities in the United States. So we did almost half again better than one of the cleanest utilities in the United States. So a really strong start. We've also contracted for actually 15.5 megawatts of local renewable energy. 12.5 of that is on treated wastewater ponds. This is where we store water before it's used for irrigation. And that project is expected to break ground early in 2017 and be finished by the end of next year. And we've also contracted for three 1-megawatt projects that are being built by private entities in order to sell that energy, the solar energy, to Sonoma Clean Power. And so one's up near Cloverdale, and two are outside of Petaluma. And we have room for more. So these are for bigger projects. It's typically like a large warehouse roof, or some, like a parking lot that could use a large shade structure. And we offer to pay customers for that energy if they want to produce more than they use. So we've also completed construction on 70 megawatts of new solar power in Lemoore. And so that project is actually a pretty significant portion of our portfolio now. The financial performance has been even stronger. So between our launch in May of 2014 and the end of 2015, the full period that we have audited, we've saved customers $62 million on their total bill. And that includes after paying all the fees to make sure that PG&E can't lose any profit. So that, we've done really well. Some of that's been luck. About half of that was good timing. The other half of it was good business. And so what we're likely to see is that that savings rate will actually average to be a slower savings rate. to be a slower savings rate over time. But, but that's, that's still really good news. So we've saved customers significant money. We've also paid out, anybody who has a solar array that makes more energy than they use, we actually pay out the retail value of their generation at the end of the year. So that, those checks go out in May. And they, they've totaled up since we've started, almost $900,000. And about a third of that goes to public schools. So there's actually schools here in town that have received some checks, and they're very happy, weren't seeing that coming. And so it's always nice to hand a check to a school. We've managed to pay off all our debt. We started with $7.5 million of debt. And this agency has no financial ties to any other public agency in the county. So we can't rely on anyone else's credit or anyone else's funds. So we had to borrow money to start. And so it's really gratifying that after less than two years, we were able to pay off that debt. And recently, our board, Mr. Cook is on our board, and he was part of adopting a new set of rates in July that ensured that customers continued saving money. What had happened was PG&E's fees to our customers had gone up, but their generation costs had actually gone down. So we needed to reset our rates to make sure that we continued to save our customers some money. And, and we've also got some reserves that are starting to, to be built, and that, that'll help us weather unexpected events. So where do we go now? We've done a good job with cleaning up electric supply, and I'm really proud of that. We have a great team. Actually, two of our team members are here today. Deb Emerson, our Director of Power Services, and Nathan Kinsey's here, our Account Executive for Commercial Customers. And, you know, they've been really helpful in, in giving us this great track record. And the question now is, what more can we do? And so we took a question around to several hundred people in the community who've been active with our program and asked, how can we use clean electricity to further help people save emissions and costs? And one of the clearest, actually, there were two clear answers. One was shifting people off of natural gas onto clean electricity for things like heat pump technologies, for water heating, and so forth. And the other was shifting people off driving on gasoline to locally-made renewable energy. And so I actually saw an electric car in the parking lot when I pulled in. Someone here has a VW Golf, and it has an evergreen sticker on the back, which means that that electric car is actually being driven by the Geyser's geothermal energy. And so that, that's pretty extraordinary, because that car has 95% lower emissions than an average gasoline car, and it's paying the equivalent of $2.50 per gallon for that electricity. So it's almost identical to what the gas rate is now. So we've started to look at electric cars as a real opportunity to reduce costs. There, there are now enough models out there. A lot of people don't know this, that electric cars over their life cycle are significantly cheaper than gasoline cars. They have much lower maintenance. In fact, in the first three years, there's an average of one maintenance call to rotate your tires and replace the washer fluid. That's the first three years of maintenance for a typical electric car, because it has so many fewer moving parts. And we're, we're starting to really figure out, how could we participate in that? And it looks like facilitating some charging stations at daytime locations could be a big win. And part of that's because we have a lot of solar energy in our county, but it only produces energy when the sun shines. So what we're really steering toward is, how can people be charging their cars in a way that actually supports our solar industry? And that means daytime charging. So we're looking at schools and park-and-rides, downtown garages, those kinds of places where people are naturally parking in the daytime. And the added benefit of that is, that will help open up electric cars to people who are low-income. It's really difficult to get a charging station installed at an apartment complex. In fact, I've tried. I live in one myself. And oftentimes, the price tag comes back at $100,000, because you gotta trench and install a new transformer and get various approvals. It's really easy in a single-family home. And so if we want to open up electric cars to a broader range of people, we probably need really reliable daytime locations in, in more places. So, so we're, we're looking at some things to facilitate that. The Joint Powers Authority is going through a refresh right now. So our, our board is actually drafted an update to the Joint Powers Agreement. And so this would, in addition to the items listed up there, it would also clarify that the goals include fuel switching, so from natural gas and gasoline to clean electricity. The other key items, just for interest on this council, is that it would combine, we have two citizen committees now. One's focused on rates and budget. The other is focused on business and contracts. And it would merge the two, and the committees have been asking for this for a while, because they both want to do both. And so we think this will help with oversight. It'll help with streamlining, and it'll actually reduce meeting load for staff. So it seemed like a good win-win. So that's, that's moving ahead. I talked about clarifying the purposes, including fuel switching. And it would really also make several other business improvements. One is to improve better checks and balances on the power contracting process, so that there's more clarity from the board about what staff should be doing when it enters into power contracts. It does establish an emergency rate-setting authority, where for 90 days, staff could take an emergency action if there was something that had been done in error, for example. So the CPUC regulates PG&E's rates. They don't regulate our rates, but sometimes they impose things on PG&E that affects us. And they occasionally do that in error. So that, that happened about a year ago, and some of the solar customers were having to pay money when they were overproducing solar through no fault of their own. And so being able to take an emergency action and then immediately go to the board would have protected those customers. So we're implementing that. And then also what's on the table is a proposal that only elected officials on cities could serve on our board. And, and Ronert Park is actually, does have a staff member serving, so they've bristled at that. So that's a matter of some debate. And then it would also give our board discretion over how many board seats to offer any new region that came in. And so some of the discussion on the board has been, do we want to continue the practice, if, if Sonoma Clean Power grows, of offering every incorporated city and county a seat on the board? Or do we want to reduce that and have a representative from a region? For example, one or two from a county as opposed to every city? And the board's been leaning toward a smaller number with expansion, and that feeds into the next slide. I think I just have two more slides. But the board has actually made an offer to Mendocino County. They, they originally asked for service actually back in 2013. And so I'm very grateful to my board for giving us time to get our house in order and not have to take up that matter until just recently. But over the last seven-ish months, our board's been debating kind of how to offer service to Mendocino and extend that. And so the board has now made an offer. They've really started to think about how much representation and what's been discussed but not finalized, is that it would be two board seats, one for the county and one for all the cities collectively. And, let's see, I've got another one there. So the, the offer was made with a few conditions. So the fewer board seats, just two for the county. And also that the county would have to pass ordinances authorizing service. So just last month, they did so, and they did it on a unanimous vote. So they were very enthusiastic about getting service from us. And the final condition is that the Sonoma Clean Power Board does a final acceptance of Mendocino onto the board. And that is currently agendized for October 6th. So, so that item's moving ahead. And I think that's my last slide. That, that service to Mendocino would grow the program by 19% in terms of both numbers of customers and load. So Mendocino County's relatively small. And one of the reasons is the City of Ukiah has a municipal utility as well. And service would actually start up there in June of next year. So this gives us time to go out and buy the energy and do all the noticing and compliance and all that. Impact on rates has been a big discussion point. How would this affect our current customers? And the reality is, it's, the impact is too small to measure or forecast. We believe that it's pretty close to zero, based on all of our analysis. But it could be as bad as a short-term reduction of net income by as much as about a percent in, in the first couple of years. But it wouldn't have any change in rates. We have enough cushion in the reserves to, to take care of that. But the long-term impact's actually pretty good. We, we believe it would save a very small amount of money for all the customers, around a half a percent through negotiations. And so that was a mouthful, and I'm happy to take any questions about Sonoma Clean Power or Mendocino or anything else.
Councilmember Cook?
Well, I'd like to first start out, since I'm a Board Director of Sonoma Clean Power, and you're a little humble there. I just want my colleagues on the council and the people listening, Sonoma Clean Power's done a great job, and most of it is by your direction. I'm very impressed, two years. I remember two years ago, you came to this council. I'm the only one left up here that voted, because Lori had to recuse herself on that issue. So having you come here is very important, because during committee reports, I'm going to be asking my council for direction on a future agenda item that's going to come to Sonoma Clean Power. But I just did want to mention that I'm proud that one of our, Deb, lives in Sonoma. So we have, we have two.
We have three. Jan McFarlane, our Head of Programs, also lives here, so.
So Sonoma Clean Power has helped bring three people to Sonoma, so that's great. But I just did want to say thank you publicly, and I think you do very great. And being on the board for last, you know, year and a half, taking over for Steve Marboz, has been a highlight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline first, and then Councilmember Hundley.
Jeff, I, I wanted to ask a question regarding the makeup of the board, possibly something that you're looking at. Now, did I understand you correctly that two board members supervisors, is that what you're saying?
So, so the current offer to Mendocino County from our board was that the county would have one additional seat on our board. And all of the incorporated cities in Mendocino County would have one additional seat that would represent them collectively. So it would be a, two additional board seats. And, and we currently have nine, just to.
So that would be two members from our board sitting on your board? Am I understanding that?
No, I'm sorry. So the, all the additional seat, you'd still have one, and Mendocino total would have two.
I see.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for explaining that, because all of a sudden, I got like this neckache. Because one thing I do know, the Transportation Authority, and I know I'm, I'm incorrect, but there are three people, three board members that sit on that board. I've never seen that. I've been in, I've been in government for many years, and it's really a bone of contention. I actually think one is an alternate, so maybe I should relax, but, you know, whatever. But thank you for saying that, because you gave me, I almost got an instant headache. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And Councilmember Hundley, and then Councilmember Edwards.
Just wanted to say thank you. That was a lot of information, but it was actually pretty easy to understand. Do you all, so if I understand correctly, solar, you can't store the energy? It just has to be used when it's being produced?
Yeah, so you've probably heard about battery storage of electricity and things like that, even pumped hydropower. But storing electricity is remarkably difficult and expensive at any scale. So by and large, virtually all of the electricity we use, certainly 99.9% of the electricity that we use throughout California is produced at the exact same instant it's consumed. There is no storage. So that's trending to change, but that trend is forecast to reach 1% in five years. So that's, that's how fast the storage industry is moving. So, so storage is a big issue, and we're, we are trying to work on it, but it's, it's going to happen slowly.
Oh, thank you. And I keep trying to get Councilmember Cook to give me a seat on the board, but he won't, because it's too interesting.
Okay, Councilmember Edwards.
So Jeff, thank you for the presentation. Are you guys in touch with the electric bus company that's coming to Vallejo?
The one in Vallejo, I'm not sure of. We've been in discussions with some folks down in Lancaster, but I should know about that one.
Yeah, there's an electric bus that's running around Napa Valley right now, and I'd be happy to send that information over to you.
Would love that. Thank you.
Thanks.
And then I just have one or two questions for you. We had a big housing discussion, you know, prior to this meeting here. And one of the, one of the opportunities that I think we're missing, and maybe this is just my pitch to Sonoma Clean Power, is that of all of our affordable units, this is, this is a market that, you know, when they are built, the money is so tight with this. This would be a great impact, to be able to put on an affordable housing unit with an electric car that actually is a program where you're going ahead and you're trying to introduce it. Because on a low-income level, the opportunities of doing a test drive in an electric car are practically nil. But this would be maybe the beginning of a program that you might conceive out of doing that. You know, council here has a goal about understanding electric charging stations and making them open to the public. We already put this on our goal-setting mission. So we're a, a city that wants to hear that and wants to know what we can do and how you can help us do it. Because this is, this is very important to us for going ahead and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I know that 80% of the homeowners charge their cars that have electric vehicles at home. Only 20% of them right now are willing to risk that they're going to find it. And I know that we are the most EV-ready county in Northern California right now. So it's not as if we don't have a lack of this. And it's not that the Visitors Bureau hasn't done a wonderful job in identifying where they are in Sonoma and other communities as we go forward in the community. But I just think this is a, you know, a best-kept secret.
Well, stay tuned for a few months. We'll have a, we'll have a good announcement, but the sneak preview is, we're working on getting the manufacturers to provide some steep discounts on used vehicles coming off leases, so that we can reach a whole new demographic with electric cars. So that's, that's coming. Details in about two to three months.
Yes, I, I actually have stopped in at a local car dealership, waiting for my opportunity soon. So when I look at this, I look at Mendocino, and I know that they're coming in. I think there's some concerns about how that's going to happen, because as you know, with Marin Clean Power, they started putting more people on board. So you actually have a test model from some, some of the other agencies. But I also like to know is, is that, I believe when we started, you know, we were paying money for, you know, being a participant in that system. And I'm just curious as to, as you take on new entities, will they be paying as well?
Yeah.
And maybe that's something you'll decide later, but I'd like to see what the answer to that question is.
The, the quick answer is that Mendocino will defer any program expenditures in their market for discretionary customer programs for a period of one year. And we estimate that's about 120% of the real cost. So they'll, they'll be well covering their cost of startup by doing that. And so that's, they're, they're just deferring that expense. Since we can, in summer months, make some net income and build reserves off of additional customers, it makes it possible, especially when we start in the summer. So they're, they're paying their way, and they're happy to do it.
And I, and then again, if I could just shamelessly ask you to plug the website so that other people who are interested in your services, including the enterprise, you know, portion, would be able to do that on their own.
Thank you. So sonomacleanpower.org. And for anybody who has questions about it, there's a great FAQ section. And if anybody has questions about their bill, there are videos, there are tutorials. Electric bills are complicated, so we invite you to come and learn about how your bill works. That's what we often get the most questions about. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next item is going to be the Consent Calendar and Agenda Order. So all items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Everybody satisfied? So I'm going to go ahead and open this up to public comment on consent agenda. Seeing no one.
Seeing no one rise, I will bring it back to council. I myself would just like to make a comment at this time, and that is on item 4C, which is the possible action to award contract to Pacman McKinney for executive search services for the city manager. We received definitely a brochure about how this executive search was going to proceed. And I just wanted to make the comment that I personally interviewed, the client references six of the entities. I interviewed a person that was actually placed by the, by the firm, someone who dealt with the firm from a human resources director perspective, and mayors, as far as how the selection process went. The, the reports were just amazing, and I was very, very impressed by the performance and the depth to which this particular firm undergoes this search. And even to the point of if there was someone who was internal or in-house, how that was dealt with, I got such incredible feedback, and all of it was very positive. So I don't know if anyone else had the opportunity to actually go to that level, but I just want to say that I was, definitely that was on my list to do, and I accomplished that. So that's just my comment on that item. All right? At this point, I believe, Gay, it's time for roll call.
No motion.
Well, that's good. I was just checking to see if you were listening. All right. Is anybody going to make a motion?
I think we are looking at somebody.
Okay, Rachel, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to approve all items on the consent calendar.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so we have, we have a first, we have a second. Do we need any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and now have the roll call vote.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that is a unanimous approval of our consent agenda and calendar order. Item 5, consent agenda, agenda order for city council as successor agency. Any questions or anything from council here? Open it up to public comment to have anyone comment. Seeing none, bring it back to council. Looking for motion?
I'd like to make a motion on 5A, approval of the portions of the minutes of the July 6th and July 18th, 2016 city council meetings pertaining to the successor agency.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a first, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So we have unanimous approval of the consent calendar as city council as successor agency. Moving on to public hearings, item 6A has been tabled, so we would then move to item 6B, which is discussion consideration and possible action on an appeal of the Design Review Historic Preservation Commission's decision to approve the application of Glenn Ikamoto for site design and architectural review of a new single-family residence, additional residence, and accessory structures at 314 to 324 Second Street East. And it looks like staff is ready to go ahead and take this on. I believe it's Associate Planner Atkins that will start.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Gallion and councilmembers. I'd like to start by giving a brief property description. The project site is composed of two adjoining parcels on the east side of Second Street East, just south of the bike path. The parcel fronting Second Street East has an area of 7,361 square feet and is largely paved over. The larger interior portion of the parcel has an area of 28,700 square feet and is developed with a residence, swimming pool, and a detached garage workshop. Numerous trees are located on the site, including a large oak and rows of Italian cypress trees. With regard to the project description, the overall development plan for the site involves a number of elements, including the demolition of the existing residence, construction of a one-story replacement residence with a covered porch and patio, partial conversion of an existing 1,900-square-foot detached garage and workshop into guest rooms and residential use, construction of an additional residence over the garage in the front, which is also the vacant portion of the site, construction of various detached accessory structures, including a new swimming pool, poolhouse, gym, pump house with an arbor, access and landscaping improvements throughout, and merging the two parcels into a single lot. The request was considered by the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. Throughout the course of the public hearing, which was held in May of this year, the review was focused primarily on the placement of the additional residence and the shade impact the proposed landscaping may have on the neighbor's garden to the north of the subject property. With regard to issues raised in the appeal, in June of this year, Ron Albert, who's also the owner of the property to the north, filed an appeal of the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission's decision to approve the application. As noted in the appeal letter, the applicant feels that the, that the approval, as it relates to the additional residence, is inconsistent with a number of regulations applicable to the project, especially with regard to compatibility and adverse impacts on surrounding properties. In addition, the appellant is concerned that the project would threaten the health of a Colorado blue spruce tree located on the appellant's property. With regard to the setback standards, the applicant believes that the setback to the north of the additional residence should require landscaping. The Development Code states that when setbacks are screened from the public view, such is the case here with a gate, the review authority can determine that landscaping is not necessary to fulfill the purposes of the chapter. The commission determined that landscaping is not necessary in this area in its review of the landscaping plan. In addition, the appellant stated that side setbacks may not be used for the storage of garbage, and the Development Code indicates that front or side yard setbacks shall not be used for the storage of garbage. It does not restrict the use of side yard setbacks for the storage of garbage containers. The proposed setbacks are consistent with the setback requirements for the northeast area, which requires a 20-foot front yard with a 7-foot minimum side yard and 18-foot combined side yard. As discussed during the commission meeting, there is an inconsistency in the Development Code. Table 3-3 indicates a 7-foot minimum and 18-foot total setback, whereas the Development Code, Section 1918020B, states that second stories shall be set back an additional 10 feet from the front setback and 5 feet on the sides and rear setback. It's been the interpretation of the planning director to apply the requirements of Table 3-3 when identifying required setbacks. And to avoid any future confusion, this inconsistency will be corrected through an amendment to the Development Code. The appellant expressed concerns that the shade cast by the additional residence would impact the neighboring properties to the north. To address this concern, the property owner prepared a shade study. The result of the shade study indicated that during the summer months, all the shade in the backyard property to the north is produced by the property's own two-story building and existing 40-foot Colorado blue spruce tree. The appellant commissioned his own shade story study that indicated that shade from the additional residence would impact the property to the north during the winter months. With regard to tree issues, the appellant is concerned that the proposed additional residence could harm the health of an existing 40-foot tall Colorado blue spruce tree on the appellant's property. To address this concern, the property owner consulted with certified arborist John Reserve, who provided two letters indicating that the proposed additional residence would not have an adverse effect on the tree, provided that certain tree protection measures were taken prior to and during construction. The appellant consulted with certified arborist James McNair, who recommended in a letter that the additional residence be relocated to a minimum 15-foot distance from the property line to avoid significant impacts to the tree. All of these materials were reviewed by the commission as part of their consideration of the project. A supplemental narrative to the appeal references the downtown Sonoma preservation design guidelines. Staff would like to point out that these guidelines have not been approved, and the subject property is not located in the downtown district. With regard to compatibility, in review of the project by the commission, the issues of compatibility with surrounding properties was a significant consideration, especially with respect to the properties to the north. The commission staff report noted that the neighbors had expressed concerns regarding the compatibility of the project and that the commission had discretion to make changes to the proposal if it deemed necessary. Following the close of public hearing, the commission held an in-depth discussion of the design review findings in relation to the project and issues of compatibility. Through this discussion, the commission concluded that the proposal fit into its surroundings and related appropriately to adjoining development. The commission discussed whether additional modifications should be required, specifically should the additional residence building be relocated on the site plan. No commissioners felt further modifications were warranted, and it was the opinion of all commissioners that the unique shape of the merged properties presented challenges with site design, and the proposed location for the additional residence was the best choice for this particular property. In addition, it was the opinion of the commission that the shade cast upon the property to the north by the additional residence would be similar to the shade that is currently cast by the existing vegetation on the property to the north. Ultimately, the commission voted 4 to 0 to approve the project as submitted contingent upon merging of the two parcels prior to the submittal of any building permits. The appellant is requesting that the city council overrule the commission's decision and require the applicant to revise site plans to comply with the applicant's interpretation of the Development Code requirements. In accordance with standard practice, staff recommends that the city council uphold the decision of the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. Based on council direction, a resolution will be prepared implementing the city council's decision for adoption as a consent calendar item at the meeting of September 7th. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Wendy, what we're looking at here within the highlighted area, is this the future or the past? Is this?
So this is the, the current configuration of two parcels. The first parcel is adjacent to Second Street East, and it's this outlined area. The parcel behind is this parcel, and they're proposed to be merged.
The buildings are as proposed.
The buildings are as proposed. Thank you.
The reason I'm asking, I have, I've been to that property, and I, I mean, some of these things I don't, I didn't see when I visited.
It came out here, and then that's the.
Oh, I've been there. And it just looks very different.
Yeah, so currently, there's a building, the main residence is in this dashed area, and there is an existing building here. There's also a pool on the site.
Okay, thank you. It reaches one of my pet peeves. When I walked into that complex, no addresses. So I walked back and forth, up and down, left and right. I didn't see any addresses on the houses or a mailbox, and maybe I'm wrong, but it's sort of a pet peeve of mine. It doesn't address what we're talking about, but I thought I'd just add that.
There, there is an address marker of 324 in the vegetation in the front of that parking lot.
Oh, thanks. Maybe I should, that's what I should start doing, climbing through vegetation.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did see that. Anyone, and next, Councilmember Hundley?
Were we given the complete packet that the commission, lower commission, received?
I, I don't believe that you've got every piece of information that the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission received.
Well, they did. Is there a page on here that actually, I see in the staff report that they got and a little bit in the staff report that we got, that there's references to the applicable code sections? Was that included either in the packet that they received, or am I missing it in the packet that we received?
I'm not clear what you're asking, so just give me a moment.
I'm just looking for the actual text of the Development Code that's, that's cited in the Design Review staff report on page 190 and 191 of the findings that were made.
So I don't believe that was included, that was not included in the council's pack.
Okay. Well, I mean, was it given to the Design Review Commission when they discussed?
No, it was not.
The code sections were referenced, but they weren't, they weren't repeated in the staff report.
So I, my question is of, I don't, I've seen the code sections because I saw them independently, but when making findings, is it not common practice to, you know, reference the code and more reference a summary that you guys made for the commission?
Well, what is typical is that we include the required findings in the staff report for the, the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, but we don't include the verbatim language.
So does the commission, do they automatically adopt the findings you guys make, or are they expected to somehow independently judge whether the findings are made?
Yeah, they're expected to independently judge and make their own findings. In the case of the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, I attempt to provide one way the findings could be made.
Okay. So if they wanted to independently verify, they would just have to do their separate research, pull up the code, and then look at the requirements to, to decide if they agreed with you guys?
Right.
Okay.
Any further questions of staff? All right. I will go ahead and open this up to the public, and at this point, we usually determine the length of time that one might use to go ahead and present their case. It's standardly, you know, a total of up to 10 minutes for each side. I will go ahead and, and work with whatever you have, but there would be no additional time for you personally, the two, the two parties, to have any more time. You could reserve it for questions or any other explanation. So I'm going to go ahead and, and call up whichever one would like to start first. I'd be happy to accept them. Which party?
Typically, you ask the appellant to speak first.
Okay. Thank you very much for that correction.
Good evening, Mayor Gallion and councilmembers. I'm going to keep my comments to five minutes and share my time with Robert Baumann, who's assisted me on the appeal. One of the required findings, and there are eight of them, and I'm going to focus on the one that most clearly could not be found, is that this project substantially comply with Chapter 1942. What happened here in this case is that staff made a mistake by opining to the design board that a finding could be made that this project substantially complied with Chapter 1942, which governs the historic preservation and infill in the historic zone. The design board relied on the staff's opinion. Only one commissioner made any inquiry regarding the fact that this project obviously does not comply with Chapter 1942. The staff responded to that inquiry without any substantive argument explaining how the finding could be made. In fact, no In fact, no rational argument can be made that this project complies with Chapter 1942. Chapter 1942 is not that long of a chapter to read. Pick it up and look at it. There are three elements to it that are potentially applicable to a project. One is adoptive reuse of an historic structure. Two, preservation of an historic structure. And three, infill development in the historic district. Chapter 1942 discusses doors, exterior materials, ornamentation, trim, porches, stairs, et cetera, at some length, but all of that discussion is clearly linked to the preservation of an historic structure. If you're not preserving an historic structure, all of that verbiage is inapplicable. The applicant is not preserving or adoptively reusing any historic structure. The only portion of Chapter 1942 that is applicable to this project are the rules regarding infill development. The applicants made an argument, which I don't quite understand, that those rules don't apply to them. I don't think even staff would agree with that opinion. The city cannot approve this project without violating its own laws, namely, Chapter 1942. In order to approve this project lawfully, what you would need to do is amend your development code. So long as Chapter 1942 reads the way it does, this project is in violation of it. If the council is going to affirm the design board decision, I request that the council or staff provide a substantive explanation specifically listing those portions of Chapter 1942 that this project complies with. There are none. There is nothing arbitrary or unexpected about the requirement to maintain uniform front setbacks. It's already the law in the historic district and has been for some time, and it's the law in other districts. At a future meeting very soon, the staff will present to you updated development rules for the downtown district. I submitted those just by way of illustration. Those illustrations highlight the undesirability of site development such as what is proposed by this project. But those rules are already in place in the historic district, they're already in place in the downtown district. All these updated rules provide our illustrations to make it even more clear to design board members and other people what is and is not acceptable. I believe at least one Design Review Commissioner is present here tonight to state, as he pretty much did at the hearing, that he does not believe that the legally required findings could be made for this project. Other communities require applicants to erect story poles showing a proposed building's outline or to submit elevations showing the relationship to adjoining buildings. If either of those things had been done, I believe the Design Review Board would have reached a different outcome. Even once this building is pulled forward, it is too tall and for no necessary purpose. It's a garage with one floor of living space above it. The applicants have repeatedly stated they don't seek to have views over my property, so it just doesn't need to be so tall. Neither I nor the DRB knew the height of my building, nor did we have a clear understanding of the relative heights of these buildings until I had an architect prepare an elevation that the applicant should have been required to prepare. The proposed garage towers over and significantly shades our yard and duplex. It will make the future installation of solar panels problematic, will reduce the ambient heat from the sun in the wintertime, and will unduly infringe on our light, view, and privacy. Finally, although the proposed location of this building is prohibited by Chapter 1942, I want to mention that the applicant's representatives incorrectly stated at the Design Review Board hearing that our tree branches extended only six feet over the property line. The arborist James McNair and several of you during your site visits have confirmed that our trees' branches extend eleven feet over the property line directly into the proposed building. Please keep that discrepancy in mind to the extent you're weighing the relative merits of the two arborists' opinions. In interest of conserving time, I will let Robert Baumann address the remaining points, including the requirement for an additional five-foot setback on the second story.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Baumann, architect. I've been practicing for fourteen years in Sonoma. Ron asked me to give an opinion based on what I've learned from past projects. Once I met with planning staff to learn the details and history of the neighboring property development, I realized that Ron not only has an excellent understanding of the guidelines, but was also correct in his assessment of the neighbor's approval. I agree with Ron's opinion that the findings cannot be made, that the project substantially complies with the guidelines. The project is not about historic preservation or adaptive reuse, so none of those guidelines apply. You can't conform to a guideline if it's not applicable. That leaves the guidelines for infill development as the only applicable portion of Section 19.42. That does apply. Of that section, only paragraph B is pertinent to that project, specifically items one and two, site plan considerations and architectural considerations. If you look at that first diagram, the proposed street scape site plan could be substituted for the soon-to-be-adopted diagram of what not to do. So, the upper drawing is one that we did showing where that building is going, and the blue are the buildings that exist on the street. The diagram in the middle is the one that comes straight from the soon-to-be-adopted guidelines for the city. It's almost an exact match. If you could now put the other photo up, Wendy, please. These are two projects that I've done in Sonoma that both had to go through the DRHPC process. The designs for each were at least partially driven by the upper-level setback requirement. These requirements vary between the different zoning areas, but they all have the same intent. The actual table requires a seven-foot minimum, eighteen-foot combined setback, but it's the paragraph that comes that has admittedly been said as conflicting with the table, and that is, "Second stories shall be set back an additional ten feet from front setback and five feet on the sides and rear setbacks." Both of those projects were at least partially guided by that principle. So, I don't see why this structure should not have to comply with that same sort of guideline. Finally, it seems obvious that story poles should have been a required part of the approvals process. This was one of the requirements that led to approval of yet a third project that we recently got approved right on East Spain Street, 2270 Spain Street. They went through four DRHPC hearings, and finally, the story poles were one of the factors that led to the approval, so people could actually, the commissioner could exactly see the massing in size of the proposed addition. I think that should be required on this project as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I see I've got twenty-two seconds left, so...
Nineteen.
Are there any questions that I could address?
I think we'll call you back if we need to in the future.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, and now we're ready for the second presentation.
Members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to respond to the adjacent property owner's appeal, and thank you for your service. I'd like to compliment staff on its friendly and efficient work again. The basis of the appeal is defective. It relies on guidelines that are only intended to apply to smaller, neighboring, single-family homes. That's not the case here. The appeal also relies on overly broad definition of adverse aesthetic impact. That term is intended to give the DRHPC flexibility in dealing with designs that are out of character with the area, like a French chateau or an English turret. It's not intended to block all new structures on vacant lots. When you buy a property next to a vacant lot, as the appellant did, you should assume something will be built there someday. What protections do you have? The setback requirements, height limits, and size limits in the development code, and the good judgment of the DRHP commissioners are all there is. Our project is fully in compliance with all of these factors. We have a unique T-shaped lot with an existing structure that will be repurposed for our project. The site and existing building dictate that the main house be located approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet from the street, which I would point out is nothing like any of the pictures that the appellant and his architect have shown. That's almost half a football field. Obviously, we'd like the garage to be located near our house. The appellant believes the code requires us to locate the garage at the minimum setback from the street. That can't be right. As we understand it, the city's policy is to encourage locating garages well back from the street, as we have done.
If it's staff's ability to go ahead and put up the first diagram rather than the pictures that are currently there, I think it would aid us as council. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Thank you. This is clearly a case where the Design Review Commission's decision should be upheld. There were no procedural errors, the parties received a full and fair hearing, and the decision wasn't even close. A ten-minute appeal hearing cannot possibly replace the two-and-a-half-hour hearing that resulted in our unanimous approval. I'd like to display a picture taken from our backyard. We have three such buildings surrounding our yard, so we're not being hypocrites here. Like the appellant, we wish they weren't there. However, we have chosen to live in the city. We understand that this situation comes with the territory. I've asked our arborist, John Mazzur, to attend this hearing and respond to any questions you may have regarding the spruce tree, but I would like to take a moment and address some of the specific issues brought up in the verbal presentation by the appellant. He refers repeatedly to us not meeting the requirements of Section 19.42. 19.42 specifically says it applies to smaller, adjacent, single-family homes. It doesn't apply to our project. And even if it did, there are numerous guidelines in Section 19.42 about roof pitch, windows, finishes, exteriors. We are not required to meet all of those guidelines. We are only required to be in substantial compliance. The DRHP commissioners felt we were. They've shown the downtown guidelines. We're not part of the downtown district. Those guidelines specifically do not apply to us by negative implication. The whole goal of unifying the frontages of this narrow downtown lots doesn't apply to this situation and this unique lot. And finally, the tree branches. Five years ago, when we bought the property, that tree was entirely encased in grapevines for years. So, everybody knows a blue spruce grows in a perfect cone, but this one has a narrow base and a grown-out top because those were the few branches that had freedom to grow. If it hadn't been encased for years in grapevines, which I pulled out with my car, not the property owner, the tree would have grown naturally. But I think the tree is an important consideration, and John, do you want to, do you have any questions for my arborist? Do you want to join me up here?
It's your time. I think if you want to just go ahead and make sure that we understand totally what's going on, then go for it. This is your ten minutes.
Okay. I can tell you what we're doing to protect and preserve that tree. It's all been written up. You've probably seen those reports. We have a building being placed near the edge of the drip line. There's controversy about whether it's inside or outside. It's not that huge a deal. We have a foundation that will be a grade beam foundation, so there will be no trenching along the back of that building to cut roots. There will be gravel underneath the paving for the garage, which is a much better scenario than right now. It's completely paved. It will be mulched, it will be irrigated, it will be protected with fences during construction. So, the impacts, I believe, will be quite minor. It's a healthy tree. It'll tolerate the little bit of impact that we're talking about, and conditions are in place to protect it well.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything further that you'd like to go ahead and present to us?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
All right. Well, we're still on public comment at this point, so we'll go ahead and now have anyone else wishing to speak on this particular issue in the council chambers. Please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor Gallion and fellow and council members. Kelso Barnett, 328 First Street East. I serve on the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, and was obviously at this meeting. I just wanted to provide a little more color and context for, and also offer myself if you had any questions about. Obviously, the minutes from the meeting can sometimes be, they don't really fully take into account, you know, a two-and-a-half-hour discussion. So, in terms of, so as you know, we need to, and as Wendy described, we need to make findings to approve a project. And for this particular project, there were many different issues. There was a landscape design plan. There was site design, which is typically a responsibility of the planning commission. I don't know why, in this case, they gave it to us, but typically, that's not something we do. Typically, a site design is set by the time it gets the Design Review Commission, so that, in terms of context, was new for us here. Basically, there were many different issues we had to approach when we were evaluating this project. At the beginning of the meeting, I remember asking Wendy how she came to the conclusion that she made the findings that the front house garage could be approved under, I believe it was Section 19.42, because as I approached it, I was the commissioner that asked about that. It was difficult for me to see how that, the placement of that particular structure, and again, that's site design that was new for us, how that could be, how we could make that finding. But again, that was one issue of many. So, I brought that up. Wendy explained how she came to that conclusion. Obviously, reasonable people can disagree. It was very, it was still difficult for me to make that finding, and I brought it up as a conversational topic, I believe, twice during the meeting, and the rest of the commission believed that they could make that finding. And so, while I had issues with that, it's a democracy, and three other commissioners did not. So, ultimately, I voted to support the approval of the project because we were looking at a variety of different things. I thought the landscape design was excellent. I thought the architecture was excellent, and I thought the applicants were, you know, good. Overall, I thought it was a good application. There was just one issue that I brought up many times during the meeting that was difficult for me to make those findings, and it was basically under 19, I believe, 42, whether that followed the development code, and it was difficult for me to make that finding. But ultimately, I did vote to support it based on the entire project. And at that point, I'm sorry, I know I'm over time here, it was a three to nothing vote, and I'm sure you've had many decisions up there where, if it's three to nothing, because you saw the good in the project, well, maybe not you, Councilmember Edwards, but because you saw all the other good qualities of the project, you voted to support it. And so, I just wanted to provide any context and color for how I approached the issue, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to comment as well? If it's not, then we're going to go ahead and close this and bring it back to council for questions of staff or any further actions. Councilmember Hundley.
So, the code section about the additional second-level setback, what, why, where did the inconsistency come from, and why was the one picked but not the other?
Well, the inconsistency just came from a mistake at the time that the code was adopted, and in terms of choosing one over the other, it's based on being consistent with how it's treated in other planning areas. So... So, in other words, in other planning areas, you don't have that additional setback, and so we chose not, we chose to be consistent with how it's done elsewhere.
So, was the mistake a typo, or was it an intention?
Well, it's really worse than a, it's an, it's a, it's an inconsistency. I don't even want to call it a, a typo. I think it rises to a larger level than that, and it's something that we definitely need to correct. That said, the Design Review Commission, even apart from what that minimum setback is interpreted to mean, had the ability to require a greater sideyard setback if it chose, as does the city council.
Councilmember Edwards.
So, I, I met with, or I've actually visited this property several times way back, way back when, I don't think I actually swam in the pool that was there, but I've known this property for about 40 years, I would say. The, I met with the appellant, I think on Monday, had a conversation. So, I met with Carol this morning, and we had a discussion, which my opinion was that this seems like a project that's so massive, it probably should have been with the Planning Commission at some point, and I'm not sure why it actually never got there, but, you know, and I look at, at the conversations and going back a couple of times this week to look at it. So, we, everybody did a shade study, but nobody did a sun study or a wind study and about the air. And, you know, we, we talk about, when we mass buildings together, about the airflow, and, you know, that's something that's very important to me, and I always look at this. I learned, I did some work in Japan way back, and about borrowing the landscape from your neighbor. And that's what I, I did when I remodeled my home on Chase Street, is I borrowed the landscape from my neighbors, and I went to their homes to look at what my project would look like from theirs. And to me, that's really an important thing, and, and knowing this block like I do, because I've, I've probably been up, up and down it three or four thousand times with the work that I do and hiking the trail, et cetera. I mean, I look at this map, and it just, it sticks out to me that this, this unit is really, in my assessment, putting my Planning Commission hat on, is, is more like a defensive move for the entire compound, and, which I appreciate, and, you know, I don't, I don't blame anybody or have any issues with, with that, but I, I really believe that for the look of the block, the historic building across the street with Vela Chez, that these, all these houses, if you go all the way down Second Street, every single house is on the line that the architect brought up. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Baumann, you can correct me, but I think every house all the way down to MacArthur is on that line.
I think almost all of them are.
And, because I do live around the corner on Chase, but the, to me, I, I, I look at it as, this is a, it's, it's a tough deal. The, Mr. Akamoto, you brought up that photo. I don't like the look of that building either, but I, it's, it's, it is what it is, and it's there, but I look at the, the aesthetics of, of the view shed through as well, and, and I just feel that with the house below that as well, I'm not sure if that's, is that General Mayan's house below? I mean, just, just the way with his backyard, then the, the second story has a view into that backyard, and then the people that are down on the bottom floor in the duplex have to look at your building, which I'm sure is going to be beautiful, but if, if it was just put forward, it would just open up that channel. I don't have a pointer, but Wendy, maybe you can just run it down from Claudia and Roger's house there, all the way down. I just look at that open channel as a very nice opportunity. I mean, the, when you go down to this little subdivision down below with the cul-de-sac, that at one time was a single-family house that sat with a big front porch right up with the rest of those houses, and that's how I remember it. So, I, I mean, I'm going to recommend that we support the appeal and move that front unit forward. I mean, with the tree, et cetera, it's beautiful. At some point, it could go away, which, if there isn't a house there, and the arborists, there's two arborists working on it, I think we can preserve that tree, because it also has a, a view of that tree being 40 feet high. Everybody in that entire neighborhood witnesses that tree or sees that tree. So, that's the direction that I'm going to go with this, and, you know, hopefully, we can get our, our, our code work straightened out, but at this point, that's the direction that I'm leaning, because I just, looking at it, being around it, visiting it as many times as I have, I think that's the best way to go, and it's not that many feet forward. I understand the garage issue and getting to your house and so on, but I see there's a boat parked back in this garage. Maybe that's the switch, just put the boat up here and towards the front. I don't know, but that's, that's another issue. I just think that we have to have that, that open channel of, of space behind all of these houses and keep them lined up on the, on the street. Thank you.
Madam?
I have a question for Mr. Ikamoto. The, the, the building in front, closer to the Vela Chez, I, is there, the reason it's faces north, is it because if you turn it the other way, there's no room for the driveway?
Yes. The, the lot's only 60 feet wide in it. I would point out that what's in front of that building is a grove of six massive 150-year-old olive trees. So, when you're talking about view, that's a much more beautiful thing than house after house after house having garages 15 feet from the sidewalk. It's, it's, it's like having a green, a green zone mid-block, and the view of that house, my neighbor's house, is to the north. It's not to the south. His view is wide open to the north, and the, and the houses behind have had no objections to this project.
That's what I was wondering, of course, with the, because of the, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the measurement of the house is, but I was wondering if that would be, affect the driveway out from your property in the back.
Yeah, it does. Wendy, could you put up the, the site plan with the, with the landscaping? Yeah, I mean, you can see that the front area, rather than pushing that building forward, I mean, obviously, we would like our garage to be close to our house. That's our everyday parking area. The boat will not fit in that building. It's too narrow. We had talked about story poles. This building is 22 by 40. It's, it's, it's a relatively small building. It's much smaller than the, than the adjacent building. Fishing's my hobby. It's my passion. So, yes, I have a boat. I keep it on site. I need to be able to tow it and park it in its garage. Again, it will not fit in, in the building we're talking about, the structure we're talking about, and that structure, again, if, if, if that building moves forward to the minimum setback, if I was my neighbor, Ron, that'd be parking in his garage, getting the groceries, walking all the way through the house, walking all the way through the backyard, walking 40 more feet to get to the kitchen. This is our final home. It's been completely designed with wheelchair, chair access on all connections to those buildings and on everything inside the building. And there may come a day when we need to be protected from the rain, and we can put up a covered trellis and get from the garage into our home. But if we have to go 135 feet, that's pretty difficult. This is a unique property. You can't look at it and say, it should look like everything else on the street. None of them have a lot that's 300 feet deep.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? I met with Mr. Albert. I went ahead and saw his documentation and his questions last week. I also viewed the property. I did not walk through the entire property because I did not have permission, and there was no trespassing sign on that. So, I just want to say that I respect, you know, the privacy of the owners. However, I had enough of the visual to, you know, walk through. I think when I met with staff this afternoon, I had them bring out this map and other maps and whatever, because I, I fully wanted to understand, you know, what was, what was going on here. I understood that the 120-page item that, you know, was presented in one of the arguments is, is actually not adopted. It's a draft document, so I confirmed that as well, but, you know, other comments have been made to that effect. I was very interested in the tree. I read the report, saw the mitigations that were happening. I was very impressed with that, but I also felt that, for me, the inconsistency in the, in the code also predicated the fact that we might make an attempt to go ahead and move that over to the side a little bit further, you know, and accomplish the five feet, which would give the additional, it's five and seven, so that's 12 feet from the end of the property. And that was one of the considerations that, you know, I was looking at for tonight as well. I, I really have to say that on this infill development, 19.42 chapter, I don't have that before me. I'm not actually looking at any of that verbiage there. So, I think I want staff to actually represent their thinking behind that to me personally and to other members of the council, because I need to know what the, you know, the, the story is from staff's viewpoint as to how they made that decision. I heard from our commissioner here when he did that, and then I also confirmed with staff this afternoon in the March 10 meeting of the Planning Commission, I had read the minutes of that as well, why, in staff's view, this was not even considered. And I understood that there was nothing that really needed the Planning Commission's approval on this particular dwelling at the point of which that was presented. So, I think, to me, this is really landing for me in that chapter, that 19.42, if that is indeed the criteria that you are making the findings, because I have the findings, all eight of them, on page 190 and 191, and that is one of the things that I'm looking forward. I would also want to make sure that the tree mitigation and, and the process that's happening here be a condition of approval. That was not done by the Design Review, so I want to make sure, whatever we do, that that, that is at least addressed, and then it's, and then it's done. We have willingness on, on the side to go ahead and do the right thing. I want to make sure that happens. So, staff, could I just have my explanation, and then we'll go to further questions? Yes. We've, we've got the moon and the stars here.
Well, I'm going to change that, I hope. Just adjust this a bit.
Okay. I see 19.42.
All right. Well, we definitely all agree that the important area here are the guidelines that are related to infill and additions.
And David, that's because the appellant's contention that there must be preservation and adaptive uses don't apply here? Is that why we can skip over that issue?
That's correct. 19.42 addresses a variety of different conditions, including adaptive reuse. That's the reuse of a, of an existing historic structure, the designation of a local landmark, and guidelines for infill development. So, the only thing that is happening here is an infill development, because there aren't any historic resources that, on this site.
And it's not in a, in a historic district?
It is in the historic district, which is why the guidelines for infill in the historic zone apply, and that's what these guidelines are. So, this section is obviously in the development code. It's a little bit different than, you know, a standard such as a, as a 20-foot setback or a 30-foot height limit. These are guidelines, and so there is inherent flexibility in how they're interpreted based on the circumstances of the property. And it's stated here, "These guidelines are to be utilized during the development, Design Review processes, criteria against which to review new construction within the historic overlay district requiring discretionary approval and adaptive reuse projects." Well, this is an adaptive reuse, but it does require a discretionary approval from the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission.
So, David, on page 191 of the staff report under paragraph seven, where it states the project is not located within a local historic district, that's not correct?
Well, it's not located within, that's a different type of reference. That means it's not located, for example, within the Plaza National Landmark District. Okay.
So, local historic district differs from just your garden variety historic district?
Right, right.
Okay. So, this is in a garden variety historic district?
It's in the historic overlay zone.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, here we are, guidelines for infill development. These are intended to encourage new infill development within the historic overlay district to be compatible in scale and treatment with existing older development and maintain the overall historic character integrity of, of the community. At the same time, these guidelines are intended to promote the visual variety that is characteristic of Sonoma and allow for contemporary architectural designs, and to provide reasonable flexibility in accommodating the taste, preferences, and creativity of applicants proposing new development, especially individual, single-family homes. So, as you can see, there's a balance that needs to be struck, and it can be struck in different places in terms of compatibility versus respecting the property owner's right to develop a new, single-family home in the way that they would like to do that. So, now we get to the guidelines for compatibility. And in terms of site plan considerations, this is probably the one that you would have to say is the most questionable. And you can either say, well, it doesn't follow this guideline, and so therefore, we're going to deny the project, require that the structure be located in a different location, or you can say, well, it meets some other guidelines, and this project is unique, and the site is unique, and therefore, on balance, we feel it's okay. But, so let me get into that a little bit further.
Could you put the leading paragraph to this?
Yeah, I did read, yeah. So...
It's for single-family, adjacent, single-family residences?
Sir, this is a residence that's proposed near other residences. Site plan considerations. New development should continue the functional onsite relationships of the surrounding neighborhood. For example, common patterns that should be continued are entries facing the public right-of-way from porches and garages and parking areas located at the rear of the parcel. Now, here, I want to switch back to the document camera. Could you put up the... Yeah, yeah, that one. Here, you've got something that the applicant is intending to function in a manner similar to a front yard. It's this landscaped area at the street frontage. There's parking behind it, but it's landscaped with trees. That said, this building is setback, obviously, from its neighbors, and so it doesn't have the same relationship that the adjoining properties do. And, you know, what the, the Design Review Commission had to do, and what the city council now needs to do, is, you know, weigh that in the balance with some of these other factors. So, let me get back to the findings. Here we go. On the issue of front setbacks, equal to or average front setback, we've always interpreted this guideline, and the council may choose to do something different, as a minimum. In other words, we don't usually complain when a building is setback further than what's normally required. And here I'm talking, here we're talking about the front yard setback. So, you know, this, in this instance, you've got something that exceeds the average. You just need to decide if that exceedance is something that breaks the pattern in a way that you find unacceptable or works based on this property's unique characteristics. Architectural considerations, I'd like Wendy to talk about the architecture of the... Architectural considerations, I'd like Wendy to talk about, um, the architecture of the, uh, of the, um, structure. I think we have elevations of it.
I, I just wanted to say thank you for this because I'm learning a lot as we're going along.
Is that it? No. Is this it? Oh, here we go. Yeah, so, but anyway, just before we look at the elevations, um, as shown in this guideline, the height of new structures needs to be considered within the context of its surroundings. And obviously, where you come down on this may vary, but it's something that the Arc Design Review Commission discussed at length in their review of this project. So, and that was probably the major element of the discussion, so let's look at those elevations. Sorry to be switching back and forth here, but here we go. So, um, this is... If you could orient the, the council in terms of the way the elevations work?
This is the south-facing elevation with the, um, the garage approach. Here's the, um, the east elevation and the west elevation and the north elevation from the, uh, property to the north.
And what's the height of the, um, structure?
Uh, uh, twenty-five feet, eight inches.
Okay, thank you. So, um, you know, the guidelines recognize that new infrastructures, uh, may very well be taller than one story. Um, they recommend the incorporation of balconies and porches. Uh, there's a discussion of the use of different kinds of building materials and, um, color schemes. And all of that material, um, was of course reviewed by the Design Review Commission. And just one more, look back at the guidelines. Oh, here we go. Oh, here we go, sorry. It ended up in the wrong spot, so, um, here's another guideline. The design of an individual, single-family residence is typically of great significance to the homeowner. Changes required through the design review process should be the minimum necessary to achieve compatibility with the overall character of the historic district. Um, historic architectural styles are not mandated. Um, to the extent that a proposed residence is not readily visible from a public street, other public vantage point, or a significant public resource, greater design flexibility should be allowed. Uh, so, there's different ways you can take these guidelines based on, you know, which area you choose to emphasize. Um, I would say that in talking to Wendy about the discussion that occurred at the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, they were, um, weighing the unique characteristics of this particular site heavily in their decision-making process. But, um, you know, different outcomes are possible, uh, both at that level and at this level.
All right, who wishes to speak at this point? Okay, Rach, uh, council member Hundley.
Um, I think mainly, uh, at this appeal, the thing that sort of disappoints me is I, I, I find this information is so essential to making these decisions and it's amazing to me that it wasn't actually provided to the commissioners and the commissioners who are all volunteers, who rely so heavily on the staff to inform them. And I, I feel like they, they can't even make educated choices with the information that they're given. And I would like to set them up to be able to make good decisions that they feel informed about and they don't always lean on the staff because they, uh, feel like the subject matter is over their head and they don't have the right tools in front of them. So, I think, looking at this project and looking at the guidelines that we just discussed, I think that it's, uh, that it, that it obviously doesn't comply with the, the way that the street is, um, the front setback. And then I, I think that this would be a situation where the side setback, even if the additional feet for the second story doesn't apply, I, I think that, um, I would like to move it to the front and then also, um, further away from the neighbor's yard. But I'm not sure what the correct procedure would be at this point, whether it'd be to send it back to a lower commissioner to make the, uh, fine-tuning.
All right, let's, let's get, um, council member Cook to weigh in and certainly other members up here.
Well, I'll first start by saying that appeals are probably the hardest thing for the council to do because this is where, um, you know, the rubber hits the road. And what council member Hundley was saying, um, it is true. They are volunteers. Everybody has different opinions, interpretations. Um, but that's why we're here, that's why the council's here. Um, I think that any commission, um, that, when it comes to an appeal to the city council and we go the other way, should not be upset because one thing that I always do in all appeals is I look, I look at all the facts and then look at the, at the areas of the opinion and the interpretation, um, hopefully, given everything that was given to, um, you know, those commissioners. I believe that this, uh, I'm, I'm going to vote tonight, uh, uphold, or uphold the, the appeal because I believe that it does not fit. There's one part in the, um, in the paragraph that, that really stands out to me, but it's all interpretation and, uh, and opinion. So, tonight I will be, um, uh, upholding the appeal.
All right, and, and we're all stepping up here to, uh, go ahead and kind of give input or ask further questions?
I just have one more question. Um, I think this, this, Mr. Ikimoto, it is, you are absolutely right. This is such a strange piece of property and I apologize for trespassing on your land. No wild dogs, no shotguns, thank you so much. Um, but I, I, I guess my question is, the house, does it have a garage as part of it? Or this garage is...
The, the parking is detached from the main residence, so this is, this parking serves the main residence.
All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, council member Edwards, any further discussion? Yeah, okay. So, um, I, I think at this point, um, you know, I'd be looking for, what are our options, David, would, or Wendy, would you just review it again? What are our options for what we're doing here tonight?
Well, in view of what I've heard, I think that the most logical action for the council to take is to simply vote to deny, or, excuse me, vote to uphold the appeal. Um, it would be difficult procedurally if, I would say, for the council to somehow uphold the appeal and approve the project with changes to the location of that structure. I, I don't, as a staff person, I don't feel comfortable with that approach. I think that, um, and in fairness, the applicant will have more flexibility and, and time to think about different approaches with, um, a simple denial of the project. Jeff, what do you?
I tend to agree with you. I was thinking about, uh, the council, uh, remanding it back to the design review with some, some directions. But I think that those, um...
I think it's clear.
I think it's clear if they deny it and list the reasons why and then leave it up to the, the applicant to rethink and retool and come back to the Design Review Committee again.
Okay.
Is there a, a twelve-month prohibition if the appeal is upheld?
Yes.
I would, I would recommend that the council waive the twelve-month prohibition so that that would allow the developer to come back within that twelve-month period with, uh, new designs. Otherwise...
Yeah, but if it's an alternate design, then there's no prohibition on that.
And that's, is that liberally construed, alternate design?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I think the council may have some options in front of it and I'm willing to hear a motion. Council member Cook.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to uphold the appeal. And, um, with that, as far as the, um, prohibition, it doesn't, it wouldn't affect it in here. That doesn't have to be part of the motion.
Uh, David, i- it's pretty confident that, uh, as long as there's an alternative design that's submitted, it's not barred by the twelve-month rule. So, the whole point of the council's motion, I believe, is to encourage an alternative design to be produced. So, I don't think you need to address it.
Okay, so I make a motion to uphold the appeal.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that with a comment. And, uh, in that, um, development code, it talked about air and light and it's just something that, I mean, I think it's a good project that fits that particular, unique piece of property, uh, ultimately. Um, but bringing it forward, I think will be, uh, the right way to go. Um, so, I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Um, I just want to make the comment that hopefully when it does come forward at some future point, that someone will tag in there about the tree mitigation as a condition of approval. Um, it's not something I can do here tonight, but I just would like to remind staff of that, um, that avenue. So, um, I, I do feel that the council has fairly, uh, heard both sides of, of this argument and I am ready for a roll call vote.
Council member Cook?
Aye.
Council member Agarmati?
Aye.
Council member Edwards?
Yes.
Council member Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye, so it is unanimous to return this project, uh, to uphold the appeal and to deny, um, this, uh, project as it was presented to the historic, um, design review.
And the staff will bring a, a resolution for the council containing findings at, uh, an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center, located at eight one five West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonomapaintcenter.com.
So, um, let's, uh, we're going to go ahead and resume now and we're on a regular calendar item, uh, long-awaited item seven A, discussion, consideration, and possible action to accept the twenty fifteen sixteen annual report of the Sonoma Tourism Improv. the 2015-16 annual report of the Sonoma Tourism Improvement District. And city manager, you're delivering this report?
Yes, just a very brief introduction. As you're aware, the Sonoma Tourism Improvement District is a benefit assessment district which was established by the city council to fund marketing and promotion efforts for the Sonoma lodging businesses. The current district management plan is for a 10-year period through June 30 of 2025, and in accordance with the management plan, it requires that the district board present an annual report at the end of each fiscal year on the operation of the district for their prior year. And tonight, we have the executive director, Johnny Westham, the Visitors Bureau, who will present the annual report, and Bill Bloom, representing the Tourism Improvement District Board. So, without any further ado, I will allow, I will ask them to present the annual report. At the end of the annual report, the action before the council is to take formal action by motion to accept that report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, on with the show.
Thank you, Mayor Gallion and City Council. This is our annual report that's required for us to present to the City Council every year for the Tourism Improvement District. Our strategic partnership is with the city of Sonoma, and I would like to say thank you, Carol and Gay. Carol sits on our board of the Tourism Improvement District, and Gay is the alternate, and this will be our last annual presentation with them, so I just want to thank them for all of their work with our organization.
That's what the big smile's all about, Gay.
Our board of directors, as I said, is made up of Carol, and Norm Krug is our president from the Sonoma Valley Inn, Wendy Stewart from the El Pueblo, Dan Parks from the Inn at Sonoma, myself, Melody Lanthorne Gale, the general manager at the lodge at Sonoma, and Byron Jones, who owns a couple of vacation rentals and is now just the past president of the B&amp;B Association. The little bit of history of the Tourism Improvement District, we were formed in July 1, 2012 for a three-year term, and last, or July of 2015, we were approved for a 10-year term, so we just finished our first year of the 10-year term. The district for the Sonoma Tourism Improvement District is the city limits of Sonoma, and we collect a 2% assessment on all overnight stays of 30 days or less for hotels, motels, B&amp;Bs, and vacation rentals. There's a 12% tax when you stay at a hotel, 10% is the TOT that goes 100% to the general fund of the city of Sonoma, and then the 2% assessment that's collected by the city and then given back to the Tourism Improvement District to use to market the Some of the benefits are economic. The primary benefit of a Tourism Improvement District, the reason we assess our guests, that 2% is for the benefit of our businesses, our hotels. So, that is the primary benefit, but there's also a community benefit, the community being the city of Sonoma, receiving the, hopefully growing the TOT and the sales tax to help benefit the city, and then we also try to be good community partners with the lighting of the holiday, the plaza lighting for the holidays, and also with a portion of the funds going to nonprofits to help support their events. Positioning, it allows us to compete with other destinations that also, most of which have Tourism Improvement Districts, Napa, Monterey, San Francisco, Lake Tahoe, Mendocino, Healdsburg, Santa Barbara, et cetera, and marketing and promotion. So, that's the primary use of the funds, which increase occupancy, but also then benefit the retail stores, wineries, and other tourism-related So, use of TID collections. I'm pretty proud to say there's a lot of Tourism Improvement Districts, and the group that helped put ours together said we are the least staffed, we have the lowest expenses of any Tourism Improvement District they have seen. We don't have any offices, we don't have any employees. Our only really two expenses are a part-time accountant that does our books and our, what is our other expense? We have insurance, liability insurance. So, those are our two expenses. So, out of about a, you know, our total budget, about $8,000 are our expenses, and we also give $7,000 to the city to administer the distribution of the funds. So, out of our total budget, about a total of $15,000 is spent for that, and the rest is all used for marketing and for our grant program and research. Special events and projects. We also, as I mentioned, we have a grant program where we have applicants who would try to promote overnight business for their events during the off-season or midweek periods, and we have donated grants to the Sonoma Valley Film Festival, Valley Moon Certified Farmer's Market, the Vintage Festival, the Sonoma Valley Museum of Art, Transcendence Theater, Sonoma Birding, Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers for their Vino Alivo event, Mexican Independence Day, and the Sonoma Community Central. So, by the numbers, this is really, for me, the most exciting slide of the night. We don't have yet the 2015 and 16 fiscal year numbers from the city yet, but through the first three years of the Tourism Improvement District. And the reason I say these numbers are exciting is because I remember coming before the city council when we were forming the Tourism Improvement District to say if we could get our hotels out of the low 60s in occupancy into the mid 70s, not only would it make all our hotel businesses more stable and secure and healthy, it would also raise about another $1 million for the city in TOT. And three years later, we went from a 64% occupancy in 2011-12 to a 74% occupancy in 2014-15, so a 15% growth in occupancy, but 10 points up in occupancy. And our other goal was to make sure that business came during the off-season months and not during our peak season. So, our off-season occupancy jumped from 52% to 66%, 20, almost a 27% increase, and our TOT collections grew from 2.4 million to 3.5 million, or almost a 45% increase in three years in TOT. And our off-season TOT went from 869,000 to 1.4 million, or a 62% increase in off-season TOT. So, we're really growing midweek and off-season, which has been our goal, and we've been successful at that. And the one thing, there's oftentimes criticism in letters to the editor and different things about that tourism is growing so rapidly in Sonoma, but I would like to point out that in the last 15 years, there has been no new hotels in Sonoma. It's been more than 15 years. And so, this occupancy growth has been with all of our existing hotels that have been here for at least 15 years, so we're very proud of that, and we're very happy because our occupancy and revenues are up. This slide just shows the same information, just how the growth in occupancy impacts the TOT, and then also growth by year. And then just a little bit of housekeeping information here that we are required to say, there's no changes being proposed for the boundaries of the Tourism Improvement District. We've given a report that's also included our financial statements. The method of collection is 2% on all lodging less than 30 days, regardless of size, and the TID does not have surplus or definite deficit revenues, and we do not receive any contributions or monies other than the assessment. And with that, I will turn it over to Johnny Westham to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the marketing we've done in the last year. And I'll be around for questions after if you have any. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, and good evening, almost good morning. I want to do point out on this slide here, there was a typo in the original report that we sent over. The fiscal year budgets that are included in your packet are the 14, or excuse me, the 15-16, not the 14-15. So, if you're accepting this, there's a typo in it, and we can just, we'll just want to let you know that. So, the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau section, in March, I brought together a board retreat for our board to go out, actually to Westerbeck Ranch where we secluded ourselves for a day, and just kind of talked about what direction the Visitors Bureau is going in and what direction we should be taking as we approach the community, as we approach our members, the hotel community, and people who may be opposing tourism, so that we could counteract all of that and actually bring to the table a happy medium that supports everybody's idea of growth and sustainability of tourism in the destination. So, I'd like to read our new mission statement, which, again, changed in March, to, "The mission of the Visitors Bureau is to serve visitors, members, and our community by promoting Sonoma Valley as a premier travel destination with the purpose of enhancing its economic vitality." I'll read it one more time. "To serve the visitors, the members, and our community by promoting Sonoma Valley as a premier travel destination with the purpose of enhancing its economic vitality." With the slides that Bill showed just a few moments ago, the rise in TOT collections, TID collections, and in a few moments here, we'll see that it's consistent with the sales tax increases or into collection increase. We're serving the community by creating jobs, by creating or supporting jobs, by bringing in tax dollars through TOT and sales tax, et cetera. And so, giving back to their membership, giving back to the visitors with our visitor services and supporting the community is the primary focus of what we're doing as an organization. And I was humbled to be able to stand up here with the Rotary Club and everybody tonight because we are the host, or we are the headquarters for Freedom Week, and we like to support the community through those type of events and really take a marketing and promotional approach to it, so that we can support them with the people and the numbers that they need to be successful at those events, and less of the logistics standpoint and more of a support approach that allows them to fulfill their mission, allows us to help them with their missions. So, that's kind of how we are approaching the destination at this point, and I think the mission really talks about the level of service that our hotels bring to the table, and then the rest of our membership and how the community involvement really gets involved. The vision is to build awareness of Sonoma Valley and position it as an overnight, midweek, and year-round destination while continuing to enhance the visitor experience. And that's the primary purpose of this report, is to talk about what we've done to support the midweek and off-season overnight stays. The TID direct benefits to the Visitors Bureau, or what the Visitors Bureau is doing on behalf of the TID to make sure that there is, that there is awareness for the hotels that support and collect the TID and how we are supporting them. So, highlights Sonoma-specific hotels section. We have them on sonomavalle.com, which is a new website that we've had for many years, but relaunched this year in June. If you haven't seen it yet, it's a wonderful, aesthetically appealing website. There is a TID section for our hotels in our visitors' guide. We do distribute our lodging partners at the two visitor centers, one here on the Plaza, which we do appreciate the space, and the other one being a cornerstone, TripAdvisor, which we'll get to in just a few moments. We do boosted posts on social media, which we'll talk about in a few moments, digital stories, bring in travel writers, journalists, photography, and cities, excuse me, city of Sonoma-specific information on Highway 37, billboard maps, visitors' guides, and other collateral material. So, the consistent message that we'll talk about throughout this entire presentation is that Sonoma is the destination within this bigger destination. And as we go through our brand analysis, and I appreciate everybody who was able to attend our symposium a few weeks ago, that we're a place within a place within a place. You know, we're a place inside Sonoma County, we're a place within wine country, we're a place within this little city of ours. And so, building that identity is crucial, and I think that Sonoma, and we agree from the board level, that Sonoma is that destination, and so promoting this destination as much as possible, showcasing the diversity of the destination and what it has to offer is critical to the success of our efforts. Tourism by the numbers, this is just a slide that I want to showcase that talks about what the impact is of tourism in Sonoma County and the United States. And the reason I bring in the entire United States, even though we're a small portion of even the state of California, is that the numbers that we have here in the county are consistent on a national level. So, for example, tourism jobs, there's 15.1 million in the United States, and there's 19,710 in Sonoma County. Jobs from tourism, 1 in 9 in the United States, 1 in 10 in Sonoma County. Economic impact annually, 2.1 trillion, 1.82 billion. And small businesses that make up, or businesses that are small that make up that general mix of the tourism industry is 82% versus 84%. So, we're on par with the rest of the nation, which is great, especially from this level of tourism and what we're trying to do. But again, it's all about consistency and maintaining that certain balance of work-life and community life. Tourism in the economy, just a couple more points to make. On average, visitors spend four days in Sonoma County. Average size party is two and spend $379 per day. But what I did find, what is interesting, is that Sonoma County visitors spent, 87% of people who visited Sonoma County went to restaurants, 68% stayed at a lodging property, 66% shopped in a retail store, 50% went to a winery, and only 38% spent money on tasting room fees. The restaurants are usually higher, and that's consistent with other destinations, simply because you have day trippers who have to eat. They don't have to sleep necessarily. So, restaurants will always skew a tad bit higher, so will gas stations, and that's just because we have day trippers who are traveling around the county and our destination here. As we mentioned a few moments ago, you look at the orange bar that comes in from the right, and between 2013 to 2014, TOT collections were approximately 3.3 million, and sales tax was approximately 2.7 million. The following year, sales tax, excuse me, TOT tax increased from 3.3 to 3.5, and sales tax increased from 2.7 to 2.8. So, everything is trending up. They, I want to contribute the TOT collection, at least, to the efforts that the Bureau is doing on behalf of the TID and our membership, and increasing that revenue is supporting the city and supporting the services that you provide. In total, though, we have about 65,000 walk-in visitors that come into the visitor's centers between the two locations, 35 at the Plaza and 30,000 at the Cornerstone. Actually, it's about 29,700. These are just some statistics that we have from the campaign that we ran over the last winter cycle. 15,000 social media contest entries. We have 2,142 Twitter followers, 34,000 reviews on TripAdvisor, 741,000 page views in the calendar year 2015, 131 million digital print impressions, that's from our advertising and our digital advertising, 58,000 monthly email viewers. And again, this is ending June. This is not where we are today. These numbers are actually staggering to hire now. 7,800 Instagram followers and 27,000 Facebook likes. Utilizing the social media platforms is an excellent way for us to continue to boost the message and the image and the brand of the destination at a fraction of the price you would traditional advertising. Website performance, you'll see one of the, you know, one of the shocking things here is that desktop use has dropped to 59%, while handheld devices make up 41% of the traffic to our website, which means people are coming to town and they are, or on their way, or they're booking their travel, not at the desktop, but actually in their vehicles, walking around, doing things like that. Page views per visit is 2.65 on average. Time on site is 2 minutes and 37 seconds. That means people are on our website for at least two, or on average, 2 minutes and 37 seconds reading about Sonoma and Sonoma Valley, the different things we have. Believe it or not, while we're on the subject, the most frequented page on our website is the history page, and our web provider wants to contribute that to students who are coming to find out a little bit more about the state of California history, and they land on our page, they study it, and they use those for book report and things like that. So, we are a resource beyond just tourism, but given that history component is significant. And another component I want to mention here, that the largest group of age users to the website is the 25 to 34-year-old, followed by the 55 to 64-year-old. Being a gap at the 35 to 44-year-old level, we're trying to figure out what's going on there, but the 25 to 34, we do see a younger audience looking at our website, looking at the destination. It's consistent with what you visually see walking around the Plaza, especially during this time period, but we want to continue to dive deeper into that research to find out what is making people book this destination over other destinations, and how we can continue to bring them here so they can drop their wallet and go home. Public relations, we have a total of 783 million views. I put an arrow there on June because there's a 318 million impression article that came out, and I want to say that was in the Wall Street Journal or USA, excuse me, USA Today and the New York Times, which had a significant spike for that month there of last year. Public relations, we're continuing to see huge growth there. We've actually hired a public relations person in our office. He's doing a wonderful job for us, and he's cultivating a lot of relationships with travel writers, journalists, and food critics, and we'll want to see that grow as we move forward into the next year. Recent fam tours that we've held, journalists and writers from the Food Network, from Connaissance Traveler, New York Times, Forbes, About.com, and a variety of other publications. This is just a sample of the advertising partners that we're working with now. Alaska Airlines and Sunset Magazine and CBS are some of our partners where we're doing co-ops for our membership, allowing them to advertise in those mediums at a fraction of the price. For example, we were able to negotiate a full-page ad in Alaska Airlines magazine, and our members, up to four, are able to buy at an $800 level a portion of our ad, which is great, considering that Alaska Airlines creates 1.8 million of those seat-back magazines each month, and we have 880,000 visitors on Alaska Airlines flying to the state of California. And being that that's the primary airline that services... And being that that's the primary airline that services Charles Schultz Airport, we want to make sure we have a good relationship with them, especially for our hotels and everything else. This is one of the most, something that's really near and dear to my heart, is that we changed our website and we've gone down a path of really creating a dynamic web space that talks about what it is to experience Sonoma Valley and the direction that we want to take, you know, the visual aspects of it. And, you know, listening to the conversations from earlier, all the stuff set aside, it was all about the visual, the air, the sun, the natural beauty. And so we want to preserve that as much as possible and showcase that because you can actually touch and smell and experience that through the pictures and the visuals that we've created here. On the bottom right corner, you can see the little black boxes there. Those are actually folding up or what they call accordion display options where you can click on multiple stories to read more about certain trends like on the right side's dining, the left side's things to do. It shows that there's, I think, let's see here, Wine Enthusiast, Fulcrum Wines Open, so press releases from our members in the city of Sonoma are continuing to populate on there. And on the right side, it talks about dining options and you can read through stories and go into deeper detail. And then the goal there is to capture people, capture their attention and then make them go so far into the website that they can't help but book this destination. And then just above it is an interactive map. And that interactive map is what we're trying to do to showcase the size of Sonoma Valley and everything it has to offer. Each of those different orange bars, I don't know if you can read them or not, are the different, what we call cities or towns that make up Sonoma Valley, starting with Carneros and ending with Bennett Valley at the top. And as you go into each of those orange bars, you can click on one and it'll showcase, it'll bring up a picture of the destination and then it'll give you the hotels, wineries, things to do and restaurants within that city specifically. So if you're staying at MacArthur Place or you're staying at the Inn at Sonoma, you're able to click in there, find dining restaurants, things that are walking or close proximity to your hotel. So it's dynamic in that sense and I think it's really going to help showcase the size of the destination. One of the reasons I wanted to do this is when I was interviewing a year and a half ago or a year and three months ago, I couldn't figure out where to stay when I was coming up here. And I researched and researched and researched and finally my wife and I stayed at the SFO Airport and I commuted up here for four days, you know, and that was a drag. But, you know, it's because I saw a lot of these cities and I didn't realize that these cities or these towns were part of a much bigger, I mean, not a much bigger, but like a bigger destination, but really close to the city of Sonoma itself. So that being said, I'm trying to educate people from that elementary level on what this destination has to offer and those different components that make it such a unique destination. Finally, this is kind of the transition from our standard advertising that we've done in the past. You can see it's got a little bit more of a modern approach. It's showcasing the different elements that make Sonoma Valley and Sonoma such a unique destination with dining, outdoor entertainment, like the IndyCar races, beautiful hotels like the MacArthur Place there, wine obviously, but also the fact that you can touch the earth by biking through the vineyards. And we want to make sure that we continue to convey that message that this is a real earthy destination, that it's one with each other and it's not something that you want to go home and brag about, but it's something you want to go home and say, I've experienced wine country and I have experienced Sonoma, I've experienced Northern California in this sense. And allow everybody to take home that personal thing because that's what you remember after vacation. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, TripAdvisor, we have a significant buy with TripAdvisor, which goes year-round. And we purchased the name Sonoma Valley, California. We own the space, we own all the advertising space on there. But the most important thing is that our TID hotels are featured on the TripAdvisor page. And a couple of our hotels had mentioned that TripAdvisor is actually their number one lead source. So by advertising in here in a really cool, unique, succinct way, we're giving back to the TID hotels through this, but also at the same time getting more reviews and getting a sense of place through the number one travel site, which is TripAdvisor. The last thing I want to mention is that we are doing group advertising and group marketing. Cvent, IMAX, MPI and Through Destination Marketing Association International, we're on the road, traveling to these different trade shows throughout the year. And the goal is to attract meeting planners who are looking at bringing small groups to this type of destination in off-peak and midweek time periods, starting November, ending around April or so when we do have the available inventory. The groups that we are searching out and seeking are ones that don't traditionally want to pay the high prices that you'll find in the summertime. We're looking at people who may want to come up from Silicon Valley, maybe a board and director's retreat, want to come up on a Wednesday in January, you know, where it's traditionally slow for the hotels, but also slow for the restaurants, the attractions and the wineries and so on and so forth. So we continue to live by the lifestyle that, or by the saying that all ships rise with the tides and we want to support each business. And I think it starts with our group at the TID. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have questions on this particular report? Okay. And remember that we have our budget also before us. Is that something that anyone else is going to?
That's just information.
It's just information? Okay, great. All right. Madeline, mayor pro 10?
Thank you so much. Johnny, could I ask you a few questions? The Hannah Center, are there people who are attracted to that because of large receptions and things, do you know? Is that part of what you're, you know, you do? Because I know more and more people are having events over there.
Are you referring to their auditorium and their event space?
Yeah, the whole venue.
It's, you know, it's a beautiful destination and that's why we chose it as our annual membership meeting location and venue, simply because, you know, I went to, I've heard of the Hannah Boy Center and it didn't come off as like a really, like what I thought about when I heard Hannah Boy Center, I was like, that's visually appealing. And then I did a walkthrough with Brian, their executive director there, and I was blown away by the campus, I was blown away by the auditorium. It's state-of-the-art, it's wonderful. I can only imagine they can grow their business and Brian and I have actually sat down to lay out a plan on how to support them and grow their business.
With conferences and then, you know, of course, the hotels and restaurants in the area.
Right.
The grants that, now if I'm, I hope I understand, but the grants that you provide, I just wanted to know, do they, are they only used to build business in low, like less popular times of the year? Is that, I understood that.
Yeah. So I actually don't do it. It's administered through the Tourism Improvement District. We do host it on our website. And that's another thing I want to mention is we migrated from sonomatid.com to Sonoma Valley forward slash TID. So we're actually hosting the website for the Tourism Improvement District where you can find all that information on the program itself and the application. But it is designed to support events and special projects in off-peak periods of time and those that bring in or have the potential of bringing in overnight stays to the city of Sonoma.
Okay. The other thing, I was so, I visit the website and it is, it's beautiful. And I guess I haven't gone to the history page, but I just want to let you know, I'm chairing an event for the Women's Club, September 17th. I put it on your calendar, which I think your calendar is fantastic because people who are doing events, they can just go to that and look to see what's going on so they don't double-book something. But I'm, I just would love it if you're around to visit us on September 17th because the Women's Club has been part of this history, the history of Sonoma since the turn of the century. And it's really amazing to me, the things that they've done. They are the ones that gathered everyone to put dirt on the plaza, to get that, the old building and the cows off the plaza. They've done a lot of things to do with the library. They have a huge part of the history here, of which I've just found out. And so I have to talk about it because I'm the chair. But first female mayor was in 1952 or 56, Joan McGrath. So I just think those are a lot of interesting things besides the other things that were, happened here. I think women in the valley were a big part of our history. And hopefully you'll be able to make that part of, you know, what your, what your history page might offer.
Thank you. And if you have information, press releases or any kind of documentation on that, we'd be more than happy to upload that.
Oh, great, thank you so much.
And I appreciate the invitation to the September 17th event. My firstborn son is scheduled to be 10 days old then, so I don't know if I'll make that event, but maybe next year's.
Okay, thank you. Okay, but I just wanted to mention about the history. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cook.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the report. Very interesting numbers in there. Being a council member in Sonoma, I do get a lot of feedback on, you know, the balance between tourism and the way of life. And I was really impressed, now I'm talking mostly about the Sonoma Visitors Bureau, when I went and one thing that really resonated with me that I just want the public to understand is locals can go to the Visitors Bureau and find out what's going on, like when they have friends come in. So I do want, you know, people to understand that. And I do like the fact that you are, you know, looking at the balance and having tourists come here. And we have a great way of life because, you know, because we actually take care of our surroundings. So I appreciate that you guys were able to do that. As far as the TID, thank you for the report. I know you've done a great job and, you know, I look forward to the next nine years, you know, with, seeing how it's going to work out.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? I do have just a comment and a question. And on your public relations screen, when you look at impressions, you highlighted that you had an article in June that, you know, hit the highlights. But I was just wondering, I looked at September and it's very low. And to me, I just wanted to know what's up with that? Like, I would think that's still in our tourist season and, you know, is that typically, you know, what happens?
You know, I was 27 days on the job when we got that number, you know, so I wasn't able to influence that. But typically, the advertising and PR campaign would start around October in generation for the Plaza lighting and the lights in Sonoma. What we've done now by hiring on our PR and communication specialist was to really look at those numbers there and try to level it off so that we do have more impressions throughout the year. So we are working with travel writers, we are working with the state of California, Visit California. And we've, I want to say bonded a great relationship with Sonoma County Tourism and their PR department. So we are hosting a lot more travel writers who are interested in wine country specifically and more specifically in Sonoma and what we have to offer, especially in the Plaza area. So I think, you know, that's what I spent my last 12 months doing was building relationships, listening to concerns, listening to opportunities and then building upon those. And I think that we have a staff that's aligned right now to really create some dynamic numbers in the years to come.
Well, the numbers are certainly impressive and I think I stated as such at your public meeting at Hannah, how impressed I was with the amount of data that you actually have in statistics supporting the numbers, which is, you know, as the Tourist Improvement District, and Bill, I just wanted to state this to you, you know, obviously we're bringing in the dollars, we're bringing them in under the 2% allotment for what's going on here. You are increasing the room rates, you know, occupancy rates and supporting the other systems. My question is, as you go forward in your 10-year plan, I look at the amount of dollars that you're accumulating in there. And to me, just like the city has a fund and it has a reserve, I'm wondering if perhaps maybe in, that your board might consider that if you are not using dollars, is there some sort of plan for how you might go ahead and reserve those dollars? Just because in years when you are not as flush or the occupancy is not as high, that you would have some sustainable track record? And it's just a question out there and it's, maybe it's just a suggestion at this point, but to me, it isn't, you know, it's saving for a rainy day. And I don't know if that's something that, you know, the district might go ahead and incorporate in there. Because I like the fact that we're consistently able to do the work because we have the money. But should we dip at some point during that time period, how can we go ahead and sustain that particular approach or at least, you know, a percentage of that approach, given that maybe our return or revenues might not be as high? And it's just a question to consider.
Absolutely. In fact, the Visitors Bureau does have three accounts of reserves. So we can continue to operate for approximately eight months if anything catastrophic does happen. And then we can rebuild the TID to continue to get those funds into, so.
Okay. Because it's important once you, once you build a plan, that you also have oversight in planning for when times are not necessarily as, as good.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Then I believe the council's action at this point is to go ahead and receive the report. To accept the report?
After the open public hearing.
Oh, yes, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing on this particular item after the report.
I do want to say one thing. As the Visitors Bureau person, whatever, Carol, it's been a pleasure working with you and Gabe, it's been a pleasure working with you. And it's kind of funny that you put the finance and the marketing department together, but it works out well. And Deanna, it's wonderful working with you as well. Likewise with everybody here and I look forward to nine more years of good TID. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'm closing public comment. Bring it back to the council for motion. Councilmember Hundley?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2015-16 Annual Report of the Sonoma Tourism Improvement District.
I'll second.
So we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion with that? I'll go ahead and is this the last time that Gabe will be polling us for a roll call vote?
Most likely it is.
So.
Great.
So we're going to just treasure this, treasure this moment.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So with that, we have consensus for the report. And thank you, Gabe, for your official actions. All right. Regular calendar, City Council is a successor agency, is there, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Let's say goodbye. Okay. Regular calendar, City Council is successor agency. There doesn't seem to be anything under this particular item, so I don't believe we're taking it up. We would move then to council members' reports and comments. And Councilmember Cook?
Well, first of all, I know it's getting late, but I did want to talk to my colleagues on the council. We had a report tonight on Sonoma Clean Power. About a year and a half ago, I came to the council and said that I wanted to make sure that I had direction of voting on as a board of director. And we do have this big issue coming up with the JPA and Mendocino. And what I'm re-asking for is just kind of a straw vote if the council still feels that I still have that voting power in Sonoma with Sonoma Clean Power. I've been watching the whole JPA transition and the Mendocino and I will definitely, you know, brown act with one member of the council that would like to, which would probably best be Councilmember Hundley because she's the alternate. But I just didn't want this council to read that I voted on something really huge without coming back to my council. So I just want to get direction.
Well, I just think our attorney is perhaps going to call you out on this, but I know pretty much what he's going to say, but Jeff, I believe you need to be saying it.
You can't be soliciting action from the council or direction from the council without it being agendized. So if you want to get that, we can schedule.
So we'll go ahead and put it on the agenda. That's what I was pretty much asking.
All right. Then we've got a process for that. Anyone else wishing to give council member reports and comments? I'll just go ahead and shortly, I attended Water, the mosquito district. I went to Community Services and Environment Commission, participated in the farmer's market in the zucchini races, visited the Community Health Center on their tour last week. I also did the Sonoma Health Fair at the Charter School for, it seemed like hundreds of students that appeared and at least 22 to 25 agencies that had booths. It was quite a collection. Was at a meeting for the North Bay Ag Alliance. Attended some information, you know, visited with Tom Conlon on Transition Town about an incredible community effort to go ahead and reduce their carbon footprint and I can't wait to stay tuned for more reports on that. I did attend a Water Advisory Committee meeting on August 1st. Just wanted to say that my mayor's hours have been very successful. I've been glad that people have been stopping by. That is Wednesday at 11:00. I wanted to remind everyone that today was the first day for back-to-school. And it's a very big safety issue because we're a very big safety issue, because we're not used to seeing children walk across the street, or perhaps on their bicycles, and it's important to go ahead and, you know, at least encourage this type of transportation, rather than just always vehicles and dropping off, as Commissioner Petlock had mentioned, about idling near school zones. So I just wanted everyone to be extra cautious as they move forward, because this is our kids, and our children of our community, and our future residents, and we want to make sure that they're protected. And with that, I will end my comments, other than saying to Gabe Johann how much I will miss her countenance over there, her fastidiousness with the buttons, telling us when three minutes are off, her hands, you know, flitting over the keyboard there as she's taking minutes, and just how she so very well takes care of a mayor when a mayor is in office, with all the responsibilities to make sure that my responsibilities are met. So, and she is deemed certainly the queen of proclamations. So, thank you, Gabe. All right. We'll move on to city manager comments and announcements, including announcements from successor agency staff. Comments from the public. Seeing no one, bring it back to council. And finally, we are off to closed session. So just when you thought you were ready to get out of here, we're looking for any public comment on our conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. If anyone is wishing to make any comment, please step forward. Seeing none, we are going to go ahead and move to closed session.
Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center, located at 815 West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonomapaintcenter.com.